Chirpy. Chirpy.
All right, we are live. Welcome, everybody, to the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four Litchfield School Board Meeting. The time is now five thirty. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on the agenda tonight are review and revisions of the agenda. Does any board member have any changes they'd like to have added in tonight?
No.
Nope.
Hearing and seeing none, we'll move into consent agenda. There's a number of committee reports that have been linked. I know there's been some comments and some updates made. Anything to move off consent this evening?
No.
Hearing none. We'll move into a summary of non-public actions from May first, two thousand twenty-four. Ms. Harrison motioned to approve the April third, two thousand twenty-four, non-public minutes. Mr. Shoemaker seconded that motion, and that motion carried five zero zero. Mr. Shoemaker motioned to seal the non-public minutes from April third, two thousand twenty-four. Mrs. Harrison seconded that motion, and that also carried five zero zero. Mrs. Harrison motioned to approve the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, non-public minutes. Mr. Plansky seconded that motion, and that motion passed five zero zero. Ms. Harrison motioned to approve the nomination of Ms. Jennifer Perkins as our GMS school counselor. Mr. Shoemaker seconded that motion, and that carried five zero zero. Welcome. Mr. Plansky motioned to adjourn the non-public session at seven fifty-five P. M. Mr. Shoemaker seconded, and that carried five zero zero. With that, we're moving into the presentations and recognitions of our agenda, and we'll start with an update from Mr. Mitchell at GMS, please.
Thank you very much. Just on the report, a few things to note. We have updated enrollment, including the K enrollment, and that is updated as of this morning. So if you want to look at the live document as opposed to if you printed it out, so we're at seventy. A few things just to highlight. First off, thank you to the PTO and the GMS community for making last week's Staff Appreciation Week quite wonderful. Not only do we feel appreciation, but kudos to the PTO for putting together such creative spreads of appreciation, including water bars and popcorn bars. Though I wanted, just while I have the public microphone, the last week of school is shaping out to be with a few minor changes, but Monday will be the third-grade field trip to Boston. Tuesday of that week will be our field day. Wednesday is going to be fourth-grade recognition. We are switching the fourth-grade recognition back to what it was kind of pre-pandemic. So it'll be a large, full-class, all-families ceremony, and then what we're actually planning on is then going out to what I call the back lawn, which is the lawn on the backside of the school, where we're going to have like a little lemonade and refreshment kind of gathering there. So that's how that.
What time is the ceremony?
It's going to be nine fifteen to ten fifteen. So the ceremony, I should say, the ceremony will start at nine fifteen. That will hopefully get all the arrivals out of the way, and then the attendees can start filling in.
And that's on June twelve?
I'm sorry?
June twelve?
Whatever the Wednesday is.
Wednesday, okay.
So I think that's June eleventh?
I think that's what it was.
Yeah. And then Thursday, because Thursday ended up being that bonus day when we had that surprise April snow day, we're actually going to put the relay recess on that day. So our relay recess for the American Cancer Society would be that day, and then Friday half day. Last week, I wanted to highlight, last week, we had our kind of end-of-the-year celebration for our Tiger Tribe. Tiger Tribe was something that finally came to fruition through our student support committee, and Mrs. Hayes, and she's in the room today, so I want to put together. It was a fun name, but really what it was, was our student-staff kind of mentor club. We were able to identify close to thirty students who we thought could just benefit from having another adult that they had a connection with at school, and so we paired up willing staff members with those students, and throughout the year, they would share mail, have little casual meats, lunches, things like that, and it blossomed. So on your live report, I did click, there's a link, and we asked for student feedback, and it was almost all positive and quite adorable, too. So make sure you look at that. We have surveyed the students that were in it. We surveyed the staff, and we also sent a survey home to families. With this year being the first year, it went really, really well, but also it's kind of that beta year. So we wanted to test it out because it went from concept to idea and make sure we have it right, and then Student Support Committee will work on over the summer if there's any tweaks, but we were quite encouraged with how well it went. And now finally, for this report, I want to, I'm going to hand over the table because we hear from Anthony every month, and then last month I thought, hey, we have a student council, and you should hear from our student council. So I am going to present to you Claire, Nate, and Natalie, who are going to give you the end-of-the-year GMS Student Council Report.
Welcome. Yep, please come on up.
I have not seen what they're going to say here, so.
Surprise!
They're all proud of you.
So tell us, what's going on at GMS? What should we know?
The student council started the year with classroom introductions. We visited each classroom at GMS and gathered ideas from students on how to make GMS a better place. Kids have lots of ideas, from more playground equipment to adding a pool. In October, we made posters to promote the blood drive sponsored by the Litchfield School District. The posters were hung up around town and posted online to encourage people to donate. In November, we participated in the Veterans Day Assembly, and we cited patriotic poems to the veterans.
First of all, I would like to talk about the kids' oath. For the kids' oath at GMS, we are really lucky because we got to pick a fun activity for Mr. Mitchell to do and a lunch option in the cafeteria. This year, we voted to let Mr. Mitchell dress like a ballerina. He wore tights, a tutu, and a tiara on top of that. The kids thought that was really funny. Another activity that we've worked on was Make a Difference Food Drive. This activity brings everyone together and makes them feel like they did the right thing. This activity is super fun and important because we get to help people in need. We collected over seven hundred items this year to donate to the food pantry. The last activity I'm going to talk about is the Great Kindness Challenge. Each student is given a paper that shows the different spirit days and challenges to complete. For example, one day, our theme was be a rainbow in someone else's cloud, and each grade dressed in a different color of the rainbow. Kids could also keep track of their kindness, and their class could get kindness certified. Those are some of the fun activities we did this year.
All year, the student council has been working on videos and skits to help kids follow our PAWS expectations. PAWS stands for Practice Responsibility, Act Respectfully, Work Together, and Stay Safe. Right now, we are working on our last video. We are doing a mock news report and interviewing students around GMS to see what they think about PAWS.
The students thought they could kind of demonstrate what they were doing for that. So we have our anchor, Nate. He's going to stay where he is, and Claire and Natalie can go into the decision.
Hello and welcome to Channel Thirty, PAWS News Central. I'm Nate Luau, and we are here, and we have a special report from, from the Litchfield School Board Meeting, all with a question guide live on the scene.
Thanks, Nate. I'm here with school board members to talk about one of our PAWS expectations, acting respectful. How do you show respect when people disagree with you at school horn meetings?
Well, you have to have a little humility, right? A little understanding, compassion, right? Making sure that you show an understanding for where different perspectives are coming from, and just keeping calm and ground, right? And maintaining that balance in how you approach your answers. Thank you for the question.
What advice would you like all students know about respect?
Oh, you didn't want to go that way? You should treat everyone as you want to be treated.
Very nice. Great, thanks for the school board. Chris Carport, back to you, Nate.
Thanks, Claire. That includes our special report. Back to the later scheduled program. Well done.
Nice job. Well done. Thank you for coming tonight.
I have just one objection to the word "let." Will you dress like?
I picked up on that, too.
Yeah, that's a verb I would use.
All right, anything else from the GMS side?
That is interesting. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
All right, any questions for Mr. Mitchell or the school this evening?
Only one quick question. In terms of, I saw your enrollment report for kindergarten. How is first grade looking? Because I know we were kind of on the edge of whether or not we would need a fifth teacher. Is that correct?
Yeah, so kindergarten is right at the number.
Kindergarten is, is first grade as well?
So kindergarten going into first is right at the number.
Got it, okay.
So we're, right now, we have, right now, as of today, I have four in kindergarten, five first, four second, five third, four fourths.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
But knowing that kindergarten is, is right.
We're still watching it, yeah.
Right there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Lammy, come on up. You're the next contestant.
Mr. Lammy's fantastic.
It's a really hard act to follow. I, I am.
Thanks, guys.
I practice. So first of all, thank you so much. They're all so kind to me. They knew I was nervous. I'm really excited to get a chance to talk to you all. Last time I spoke to you, I was at the middle school, and I got to talk about our awesome drama program down there, and now today I get to talk about one of the big things that I was able to tackle at the high school. And so thank you for the opportunity to sort of talk about a way that myself and FOPA want to give back to our, our students. This is our CHS Performing Arts Trip. As you see, I'm going to cover these following things in the, in the presentation. Feel free to click on that blue link as we go. That's the proposal of, that was sent to me by Kaleidoscope Adventures, which is where I pulled all the data from, and I was figuring we would take a look at it. We would look at the highlights of what we're trying to accomplish and some travel considerations. First and foremost, in planning and prep, we, I asked, I tasked our members of FOPA to see if we could, if they could help me out in deciding how this trip would go, and Margaret Norton and Christina Harrison jumped right into the opportunity to start finding a trip that would work for our students. They focused on affordable cost per student. That was the primary thing, to make sure that as many of these students could go, and we had a few specific accommodations to make for our kids. We wanted to make sure that we had travel insurance, both for students, for airline, and for equipment. We wanted to make sure that there was an available twenty-four-seven travel agent at all times to, if anything were to go wrong, and we wanted to make sure that there'd be group tickets, so that way all of our students could get onto a plane together, to make sure we could all travel together. These community members talked back and forth with, I think it was initially three companies, then down to two, and then finally to Kaleidoscope, where we asked them to give us a quote for a couple different group sizes between thirty and fifty, and luckily, they ended up giving us from thirty to fifty in between. So we have a lot of different options, and we can kind of peruse today. Kaleidoscope's proposal offers the most benefit to our students. That cost right there is really what I'm hoping to get into, between sixteen hundred and seventeen hundred dollars per student, and this gives us a lot of stuff. That gives us a public performance in Universal Orlando. As, we went to Disney two years ago, but the, going to Universal allows us access to like the place where those wonderful Universal movies come from, so like your Jaws, that sort of stuff, where we can access your John Williams music. We get to do a little bit of sound design, and it's funny that I was, that I get to present about this, because I was talking to a high school senior about four hours ago about what careers in music might look like, and this sound design workshop is, if band, orchestra, and chorus get to design like the sound effects to a movie, besides just playing, they're going to get an opportunity to like make the footsteps and crunch leaves and walk through things to make it sound as if you're, you get to be part of the sound. The other big important thing is that we initially asked them to have us depart from Manchester-Boston Regional right over in Manchester. The proposal you're seeing, he, our representative, switched it to Logan in the last minute, just because it was cheaper that way, and it's easier to get one-way flights, and we really want to fly, like, we want to get on and then get off, and that'd be it, but there, we could still decide to go to either airport. It just, if we want to save some time and save some money, we'll end up going to Boston. In a perfect world, we would fly out of Manchester, and I like to think I live in a perfect world, so I'm not done. We'll have coach buses to and from, so our, our groups will travel together. And then our itinerary is here. I won't read bit by bit, but the highlight is that our students will get four days in the parks, and of those four days, one of them will be a workshop where we get to work with the, with, with the music professionals. The next day, we'll get to perform in the park, and then the following day after is that sound, sound effects workshop. The, you'll see, we were able to get four days of park access for a pretty decent price. I think a, a couple weeks ago, they called us and said, do you want another day at the park for six bucks more? And that's a deal you really can't pass up, because I want, I want to make sure I have some time at Harry Potter World. Then, obviously, the other detail I want to make sure is, it's a little bit variable. If we went back to page one, the, at the very top, airport departure, this is assuming we're leaving from Logan. There's a little bit more travel time baked in. If we ended up going out of Manchester, it would be easier, because we would ask the community members to bring their students to Manchester-Boston, just to make life a little bit easier. And then finally, when we get to the, the next, the next slide after this, this is where the rubber meets the road. This is where I, I, we spent a lot of time going back and forth with the company, trying to figure out how we can make it as cheap as possible and still get a really awesome experience for our students. To look at this chart, all the way to the left, if we only brought thirty students and they stayed in quads, it would cost each student nineteen, nineteen sixty-three, and if we brought up to fifty-five students or more, the same available spot would be sixteen-ten. That green box is what I'm really hoping for, and then anything in the yellow box is I'm okay with, but I'd really like to get as many students in, in this, in, on this trip as possible. The smaller box was our original quote. This is what they told us if we were to bring only fifty people, like we asked initially for fifty people, and that's how much it would cost per student if we were to do a quad, a triple, a double, or a single. The way, the most important number I think I'm going to be moving towards is the top right one, fifty to fifty-four. I was speaking to the band today. I shouldn't have told them about having this, having this conversation today, but I figured since I'm talking to you all, I was like, what would, who do you think would rejoin band or chorus if we were going to Universal? And I got some pessimistic numbers. I had one student say no one would rejoin, and I have to work with that student, but I had some people say like up to ten kids would come back. And besides talking to our performers, I also spoke with students who've never been in the department, and I asked, what's, is this a thing that would make you want to come back? And I actually, the quote of the day was, it's a reason for me to try something I was hoping to try. So that gave me a lot of hope. I wrote that in my little teacher diary and came over here. These are some important considerations. The, first of all, that we will need some community help. The time quote, the airline rates weren't available. That's since we, there are now flights available, but when I went on today to try to see coming out of Manchester-Boston Regional, there was only one nonstop flight, and they hadn't posted the price yet. As we get closer to the trip, that might not be the truth. We might be able, we might be able to get a nonstop out of Manchester, but if we do end up having parents, or if we do end up going to Manchester-Boston, I would, I'm hoping we can just drop our kids off. Either way, if we end up at Logan, I want to have parents all the way along the track. I want, when we arrive on the bus, I want there to be already a parent there at baggage drop-off, and then I want someone through the baggage line, so when we get to our gate, they're already there, and so that way our students never have to worry about what there's going on. I want a chain of command all the way, all the way, like, all the way down. If we do end up transporting from Campbell, that price from previously was including bus travel. If we wanted to save a little bit more money, we could try to use either first student or another third-party bus to see if we could get a little bit more shaved off the price. And then finally, there's only three meals that the students would have to pay for. They would have to pay for their airline lunch at either Boston or Manchester, and then the two flights coming out from Orlando back. Everything else is covered by the cost of the trip. Even more important stuff, the total, like, payments are handled completely by Kaleidoscope Adventures. So once this, once the strip is approved, they send me a link that I distribute to parents, and if a parent wants to begin paying for the trip, we don't have to burden anyone in our district. If someone, a representative at Kaleidoscope, it's their responsibility to make sure we get paid. The parents can work with them, and then additionally, we confirmed that our students who have carryover accounts, the ones like from the mattress sale and other fundraisers, the way that it works is that the school reaches out and says, this student is going to be paying from their account, and we send it over to them. So this should be really easy for parents and even easier for our folks up in the office. I would like to muster and make sure I do it well, chaperone training. I've never taken any, any group this far away, and I take this stuff really, really seriously. Student safety is huge for me, and I want to make sure that I have a great team of chaperones, parents, other teachers, who can make sure that our kids are safe, and make sure that we're all in the right place at the right time, and everyone's having an awesome time. I'm happy to give that training. I'm even happy to go and speak with Kaleidoscope Adventures to see if they have like training resources and get really ready to go, but I want to make sure our volunteers know what they're doing. And then finally, I was doing some research today, so I apologize, I added this like a couple hours ago. I looked at what Kaleidoscope Adventures provides for insurance. They have about seven different programs for different groups, both for travel insurance, moving together as an ensemble, and then when I reached out to the rep, I asked, what about equipment insurance? How do we make sure that our equipment is attested to? And he told me that they work with the airline, and they use the airline insurance. To that point, it's going to be hopefully my policy that all musicians who can will bring their instrument carry on, so that way they can have it with them at all times, and only our poor tuba players, our poor euphonium players will have to check their baggage. Everyone else will have their trombone players, too. Apologize. Everyone else will have them with them at all times. And last but not least, we've already sort of put together some ideas for fundraising. FOPA's done an incredible job at finding opportunities for our kids. I don't know that every student will be able to fundraise enough to not pay for this trip, but I very much would love to have a majority of kids have these opportunities. The big one is we sell concessions at SNU Arena. There's these lovely events where our community members can go to SNU and just sell concessions, and we get a massive portion of money back. I think, I don't want to brag too much about how much we've done, but we have been able to do a lot more with FOPA, just like to give back for seniors, for our scholarships. We made our typical year of like funds in one event, and if we can start allowing community members and parents to go and support their kids, it's going to be a lot of kids who don't have to have a big price tag for this trip. Additionally, we spoke a little bit about potentially having performances this summer in both the new Veterans Park and the, the library, where we would be able to like put out cans for students to perform. I bust a lot in my life. I like to put the case out, open it up, and see how much money we get, and it'd be a very fun opportunity to give that to our students. Obviously, we have the mattress sale, which this year did a little bit better, which is, was really cool, and more ideas to come. TRIAM actually was speaking to me this week, and when, in our meeting next week, we're going to, sorry, two weeks from now, I asked, I tasked them with finding other ways that we could do fundraisers for students, both in and out of TRIAM.
Can we ask a couple of questions? Yeah, of course. Thank you.
That's the next slide.
Oh, perfect. I was ready. In terms of the, the fifty-five students plus, in order to get the discounted rates that you're showcasing, how confident are you that we're going to get fifty-five students? And, and like, you know, what are the qualifications to be able to go on this trip?
So that's a, that's the tough spot. I, I'm a bit of a pessimist as a person, but I'm an optimist in the real world. I, at the moment, our current numbers for both of our ensembles, chorus, and band are thirty-three, so that's a very scary people to have to get twenty. Now, the upcoming numbers are, schedule for next year is not set in stone, but I have a couple of ways that I think we could get the number to fifty. First and foremost, our fusion band isn't added in those ensemble numbers because it meets outside. I would love to include our fusion band. That gets us like five or six more students. At the, currently, we have six, six students in fusion band who are in neither chorus nor band, so that's an additional six kids. And then performing arts, we have a lot of actors and singers who did both shows and shows last year who are not at the moment associated with the music department. My hope is that I can convince them to join either ensemble, so they qualify to go to this trip. My only requirement for a student to go on this trip is that they're in somehow giving back to the music department in some way. The final thing that is kind of up in the air, I would love to also start a guitar ensemble. We had a total of thirty-eight kids take guitar one and two this year, and that's going to be a lot of students who probably want a little bit more guitar, and I think it'd be great to start a guitar ensemble after school next year for additional guitar playing. There's nothing stopping those folks from performing and then joining us on that trip. But there's no clear, I, I wish I had an easy, like, this is what I'm going to do, but.
I just feel like there should be some written rules of engagement requirements for who's eligible and who's not.
Yeah.
And it feel, it feels like it's a bit wish-washed on that right now.
That's, that's a very fair point. I'm, my, the more boiled-down version of it is if you do performances in the department, I want to be able to include you on the trip. That's, I probably should have started with that.
How many chaperones are you going to have for something like this?
I believe we're trying to shoot for like five or more. I think the, if, the, every time we get.
Policy's one to ten.
Yeah.
So we're going to meet the policy.
So I'm not considering myself a chaperone on this trip, and I want to at least, I would be most comfortable with like eight chaperones. I want six or seven to a parent, if not more. The number of chaperones also goes into that number. So if we only took thirty-three students, ten chaperones creates forty, forty, sorry, if we took thirty-three students, ten chaperones, forty-three, forty-three people.
So they're baked into the accommodations in this?
Yes, yes. They would just need to pay for their accommodation to go.
That's a, that's another question I had, right? And just in terms of hotels, obviously, for those that've been down there, you know there's hotels on property, off property. It's not clear in this proposal where the kids would be staying.
On-site, I think.
Yeah.
It's on-site, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I actually, it's, it's very funny you say that, because as I'm driving in, I'm like, what detail? I forget. We're staying, I believe it's dockside, which is in the park, and I have the information there, too. Sorry, I forgot to include.
That's all right.
That's why we did cheer.
I didn't know there was transportation to an outside.
I had a few other, just considerations.
Yeah.
When you looked at Manchester with the flight, was it a nonstop flight?
It was a nonstop flight.
I know they don't have as many nonstop flights.
Yeah. It's not impossible. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, no, no. But all I was going to say is that one thing that I would consider with Manchester is they have far fewer flights, so if you have a cancellation, you're going to have fifty kids down there. You may want to consider the Logan issue for that. I know we had some considerations about insurance, even with parents having to drive their kids anywhere that's related to a school thing. We need like your blood type, your social security, like, it's like crazy.
Manchester's hard to fly out of.
Yeah.
I travel quite a bit for workouts.
And then the other consideration that I would just suggest is, it sounds like you're looking at coach buses. I don't think you'd even be able to use a school bus with baggage. I think you'd have too much.
Well, with fifty-five individuals, yeah. I mean, if you have thirty, that's a different story.
Maybe, right. But we're talking instruments, too.
There's the understore, under-bus storage with the coach buses, and then the numbers provided on that table are accounting for if we went to Logan with coach buses.
Gotcha, okay.
That's what would be the cost.
Those are all, all my notes.
Thank you.
So does the price include airfare? Because you had mentioned that there was no, no pricing out of Manchester yet.
So the first quote we got was prior to when the airfare was available. The second quote that came out, like, I got it from yesterday, does include airfare. Yeah.
And I know there are also airlines that haven't, they don't publish their rates until.
Yeah.
Like Southwest.
For February, like Southwest, until later, later this summer, so.
Yeah.
It's a chance, you know, it's a, it's a ballpark estimate. It's a generous estimate.
So are you looking for a motion this evening to approve it?
Yes, please.
Do you have one more, one more question? Is this during February Vacation Week?
This will be during February Vacation Week. Students would leave on Monday, come back on Friday.
It seems like a really.
In a perfect world.
It seems like a really cool program. I mean, the programming, the stuff that you're looking for, sounds really neat.
Yeah.
That, there could be a lot of interest in that.
Well, when it comes down to like what I want to provide to these students, I wanted, I want educational opportunities. Like, this is going to feed into a huge thing I would like to undertake, where every time we take one of these trips, I want to go to a location where there is like musical, there's great musical value. Their education's really important to me, where I could start with this, if we were to go to a different location, like maybe a Tennessee or maybe somewhere else, when we went to Hawaii a couple of years ago, that's like the importance of going to that musical event where everyone's coming together to perform, like, that's what I do this for. Granted, it is fun to go to Universal, and I'm biased, I do like Universal a lot. It really is the experience, and they've, they've done so much work.
I'll make a motion to approve. I think this is a really great opportunity for the students. Thank you for all the hard work put into it. I'll make a motion to approve with the caveat that there are documented, clear program guidelines for eligibility of this.
Absolutely.
I'll second. We'll go to discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstained?
Five zero zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lammy.
Thank you.
Andrew, just for tracking, do you want that to come back to the board? Your motion included eligibility guidelines. Do you want those back?
I want the eligibility back to the board, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so we can see.
Have a good day, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, moving right along on our agenda. We have Anthony with us this evening for our student representative report. Looking forward to the end of year, or what?
I am.
Countdown in days.
A month, I think, right?
Oh, come on, it's like twenty-something.
Does Anthony get a break from us in the summer, or does he have to come in?
For his sake, I have one.
He has to come.
Love the work. Poor Anthony.
All right, so for spring sports, boys lacrosse are ten and two. Their next game is today, away at Laconia. That's why Nick's not here. Baseball is ten and one. The next. Baseball is ten and one, the next game is today, home against Winnebago. Track has a meet today, last meet, boys placed eighth, girls placed second. Girls lacrosse is two and eight, the next game is tomorrow at Kiasarge. Softball is seven and five, the next game is today, home against Laconia. Which baseball and softball, I believe, both got rained out.
I think softball, they should play in my left.
Oh, did they play? Cause I, I walked outside, I like three thirty and I, I was out there.
Just after four.
Okay. Baseball got rained out. For recent pa- past activities, AP exams have been the last two weeks, so I'll kinda go through the chart with you, exams taken, the number of students. AP US History, twelve, and AP US Government, seven, AP Statistics, twenty-nine, AP Calculus, A, B, B, C, sixteen, AP Macroeconomics, one, and AP Human Geography, one, AP Biology, one, AP Environmental Science, twenty, AP Spanish, seven, AP English Literature, nine.
Did you take any?
I did not, no, I did not.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot, but-
Grayston, Grayston hers last week. It was a good experience.
Yeah, it was pretty long too.
It's a long, it's a long day. It's a lot of pressure.
It's like the bar.
I know.
Get ready for it.
Uh it's sure. Yeah.
So for current events, students and teachers are doing digital portfolios to demonstrate and take accountability of their learning. Prompt tickets are being sold at lunches. Today was the last day with ninety-five dollars.
Yeah.
And then upcoming events, Spring Fest is next week. There will be an assembly and many outdoor activities next Friday. The themes for the days are white lies, tropical day, frat versus sorority, rhyme ver- rhyme without a reason, class color day. These aren't official, but these are like the top days we have so far.
Rhyme without a reason.
So this one is um, do you wanna know?
I don't know, I'm scared. Now I'm a little bit nervous.
So you kinda like pick two things and they rhyme with like no reasons. Like one of the examples was Traffic Cone and Post Malone. Pick two random things and you're kinda like-
Team up with somebody?
Yeah, one-
The Traffic Cone and Post Malone.
You team up with someone, yeah. So that's, yeah.
That's kind of fun. I'm a little scared of it. It's gonna come out, but I'm sure kids will be creative.
Yeah.
What lies?
Like dressing in white?
Is it just white?
I, yeah, I think it's really just dressing in white, or sometimes people will put their like picture of like a photo of like the biggest lie, they had her like written on the t-shirt.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then that's it for the presentation.
Awesome. I know there's been a lot of uh hard work within the schools, uh notably with SAS testing as well being performed the last couple of weeks, so.
So for the academic page, we have, um I sent an email to all the teachers explaining the idea about the academic page where we would, me and Nick would go into classrooms, kinda interview students, see the projects and like experiences of what they're doing, of learning. No one got back to me though. So.
It's a hot topic.
Yeah.
Zach Lymex, right?
It's end of the year, it's tough.
So, yeah.
Maybe it's something to start at the beginning of next year.
Yeah. My next step is just to go-
Don't stress about that, but it'd be nice to see.
To impound into the teachers to try to push it a little more.
I wouldn't worry too much. They're pro- everyone's on overload.
Yeah. All right, any questions for Anthony this evening? All right, we'll move on to community comment on agenda items. So public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Public comments shall be made without expectation of a response by any school board member to matters raised by such commentary. Comments and statements may be made on topics contained on the agenda. Uh and again, it will be, there'll be a second community comment on any items uh later in our meeting. Any community comment this evening on agenda items? I see all sorts of eyes looking at me and nobody coming up, so I'm gonna say no and we'll close community comment. Again, there'll be a second round a little bit later this evening. Uh correspondence, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Ames.
Thank you. Thankfully, um for me, it was late this week. Um it, so on May third, we had an email from Mr. Hess sharing CHS end of the year dates with us. On May third, Jan Sullivan circulated the five-one um public and non-public minutes. On five-six, uh Heidi Ames, I emailed the board circulating the end of the year activities, school board attendance sheet, um which incorporated the events that we want to have attendance at, um so we can coordinate that. On May sixth, Holly Felzone um emailed uh the board with a confidential personnel issue. On May eighth, Anne Inomarati from the business office circulated the credit card manifest. On May ninth, Dr. Jettie emailed and circulated the assurances um for review prior to today's meeting. On May tenth, Anne Inomarati circulated um an additional manifest. On May tenth, Mr. Totten circulated a spreadsheet and I put this in all bold with preliminary, preliminary-
Thank you.
Peak of year-end fund balance. Insert all language that reminds the reader that this is preliminary and not guaranteed. So, just a preview. Uh May tenth, um Renee circulated the May fifteenth agenda. May thirteenth, Holly Felzone uh circulated an email sharing um news of the passing of an LMS employee and so we, we certainly send condolences to her family. On May fifteenth, Anne Inomarati um circulated an additional manifest. And then also, May fifteenth, which is today, um I shut it off at about three o'clock, we received an email from s- what do we call, superintendent-to-be is what I have, superintendent-elect? Elect, okay. Uh Mr. O'Connell emailing the board regarding a confidential personnel matter. And that summarizes correspondence for the last two weeks.
It was a late one, yeah.
Thank you. Great job. Uh with that, we'll move into general business and turn it over to Dr. Jettie for an update, please.
Yep, so I, I wanted to start by talking with the board a little bit so that you're aware of preliminary conversations that we've had regarding preschool. Um and what we're examining is uh location for preschool. So after the bond on the new school failed, um I think everybody on the board is acutely aware of space needs at GMS or at a premium. Um and now we're adding classrooms which will further put space needs at a premium, a greater premium at, at GMS. So uh I've had a conversation with Principal Mitchell and Principal Hess regarding the possibility of relocating preschool to Campbell High School. Um and we would need to do some uh renovation of the building in order to accommodate uh the preschool there. I've talked with the state of New Hampshire and it's actually, from their angle, it's a relatively straightforward process. Um in fact, interestingly enough, I learned that the regulations for sites and facilities are really, th- they don't say anything about preschool. So the rules for preschool are less restrictive than they are for kindergarten. Um so it gives us a lot of latitude on where to locate and how we would supervise uh programs relative to preschool. So um, you know, we could have an off-site supervisor like Principal Mitchell, we could have an onsite supervisor like Principal Hess, we could have uh lead teachers who are supervising. There are just a variety of ways that we could choose to proceed ahead with that. Campbell, as you know, was built for six hundred students and at one time housed five hundred and fifty students. Next year, we're at three fifty. So clearly, the real estate exists at Campbell to accommodate preschool. Um and the space that we've identified is the art rooms, um with the art classes being relocated into the former woodshop area. So conceptually, it would be an open, concept art, uh art studio with uh the preschools housed in the um, in the actual uh art classrooms. And we could do some relatively minor uh renovations. Um our thought was immediate outdoor egress so that uh the youngsters would be able to, in the event of a fire drill, for example, they could exit directly to the outdoors. Um you would be able to renovate very quickly the darkroom into a bathroom with a uh preschool-sized toilet and so forth. So um the facility can, can be made to accommodate that pretty easily. I would also point out to the board that um there's about fif- fifty thousand dollars in impact fee money available to Campbell High School. Um and I can't think of a better way to use impact fee money, which is based upon population growth, than to locate um, than to locate the preschool there. It's a hard stretch when the population's declining at Campbell to do anything else with that, right? But I think to uh designate that we could use it for uh overflow space uh relative to space needs at GMS. And, you know, currently, um the preschool takes up, uh because of the high needs of the students and the age of the students, there, there's space that is taken up that would be better uh utilized by other classrooms that are there. Um, you know, we're adding a counselor next year and I don't know where the counselor is gonna be accommodated. The counseling office is tight as it is. Um our school psychologist who is, uh it's actually a district psychologist, right? So they have to have an opportunity to meet in the various buildings and currently, there's some doubling up and um it's a, it's a, not a clean uh location. So um, so that's what I have relative to this. And what we would be looking for from the board is, is permission to engage with um somebody to begin the planning of this. Because if we're gonna have this in place, you know, there would be a need to do some renovation work this summer. Um it would be relatively short order renovation, but it's hard for me to assign a, a price to it until I know that we can proceed with somebody to do that design work for us. So if we're gonna, you know, take a window out and put a door in, um there's gonna be some costs associated with it and we would need somebody in the trades to be able to estimate that out for us, so.
Are we able to accommodate um an outdoor space for them as well?
Yeah, so if you think about where the art rooms are located, those windows look right out on the gazebo area. Um and so conceptually, what we talked about is some fencing there with the playground equipment in that backyard. Um when I spoke with the state regarding it, I said, can you give me some models where this has worked really well in the state? Um because I also envision a, a great opportunity for our high school students to become engaged in early childhood education.
Child development class.
Child development class could become engaged by having uh students who are onsite that they could work with. Um and interestingly, they, they pointed right at Bo High School and they said, Bo has done a phenomenal job receiving the preschool into the school. And I'm like, great, cause the on, incoming superintendent will have the curriculum with him in his back pocket then, because uh Brian has um, was, i- it was noted that he has done a lot of nice work with making that work at Bo and Doug, you've had experience with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, Bo is currently in an addition of eight classrooms to the elementary school, so just like Litchfield space was at a premium there, so. Um I don't know if it was like four years ago, they, their decision was to move preschool up to the high school um and cause there was, again, space at the high school uh that they had to do minimal type of work to. Uh as far as I know, from my last couple of years there, it worked out really well, so.
How many students could we accommodate in preschool in that space? Do we know?
Well, so the current, so remember preschool is um, it runs in half-day programs, so we currently plan on forty students. I think we've had forty-three or um, you know, thirty-five, it all depends. And students do uh hit the age of being able to attend it then, join during the course of the year.
But would we, but if we, is there like a cap on how many we can actually fit in the space? I'm just like curious, like if we were to grow within this space, like if we were to grow in, in size of need for students, do we have?
So um I, I, I feel confident that the current demand um for students who are, who are offered the opportunity to attend preschool. So you have, you have two things. You have the student who is uh receiving preschool services and then you have the typical peer who is there to uh be a part of the preschool, right? We can absolutely meet the needs of the current population who need the programming. And then our flex is on the typical peers who are um the part of the preschool, invited to be part of the preschool. So we can make it work within the, the half-day structure and what we have.
Right, I guess what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get to though is, you know, w- when we look at um opportunities for bringing in revenue as a district, um you know, one thing that we had briefly touched upon at one point was, you know, preschool is obviously, if, if, if we're, if we're looking at, the high school has a lot of space and what's a better way to use some of that space? I agree that maybe bringing the preschool over is, is a good idea and I'm just curious, do we have the ability, cause typical students do pay for preschool. Do we have the ability to potentially grow that if there were enough demand? Do we have the potential to ability, the ability to potentially grow that by virtue of the fact that we have enough space there to grow that? Cause if we're gonna, if we're talking about investing money into this, it might make sense to look at that from the perspective of, can we also bring in more revenue as a result of that?
Um I, so I didn't look at it from that lens at all. I'd have to go back and, and run the math on that or have um-
Yeah, just-
Some, somebody else would have to pull like, cause there, there are then requirements for staffing ratios.
Sure.
Um it's not about the real estate, it's not about the square footage.
Well, I mean, this is obviously right, cause you gotta fit so many kids per square foot.
Yeah, but we haven't been limited-
Ratios down.
No, no, I get that, but, but human capital i- is not, we're, we're talking about investing money into retrofitting a space to make it right for preschool. Right, so like, I don't, you know, we can address the human capital aspect of that at any point, but we're talking about addressing the physical space right now with money. So I'm just saying, you know, ultimately, like it makes sense to look a- as that as a potential opportunity and make sure we retrofit the space appropriately if we have the ability to do so. Particularly given that we seem to have extra space at the high school.
So I think we need to get some estimates first, understand what the cost is to put in a door, right?
Sure.
To put in a fence, to put in some playground. Can we move the playground equipment from G, I don't know, right? We need to understand what the costs are. Fifty thousand doesn't seem like a ton of money to be able to do that. So I'd be curious how we're gonna source the other funds to be able to, to, to make this happen.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions. My first one was, how does this impact services provided to the preschoolers? Because I know, you know, like we have our OT and PT here-
Yeah.
-that speech, um who share, the, I mean, I'm assuming we would add in travel time or-
We would absolutely have to do all of that. So we would have to have travel time, we would have to have scheduling considerations, so all of that would have to be factored in.
And what about like building administration? I see, you know, Principal Hess in the audience tonight, right? I mean, I'd be really curious in your thoughts on that, given we're talking about Campbell.
Yeah, as I said earlier, the uh, the state answer was that they are-
I asked Mr. Hess.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you directed that.
I did. Thank you.
I think it's a, I think it's a great idea. We talked about it originally.
Um I, my only concern is just the, I only have two empty classrooms at the high school. I know we were built for six hundred and those two classrooms are science classrooms. So yes, we have space and these retrofits can absolutely happen. I think it's a great idea. But just, there's two empty classrooms and there're science labs upstairs, so this idea we-
But the woodshop though, right, is not used, right?
Well, we're gonna make that potentially the art room now because we're gonna take the art rooms away. But again, the rooms can hold lots of students. It was built to hold up to six hundred. But there are only two classrooms not being used at Campbell High School and their science labs.
Right.
So I just wanted to-
Yeah, no, I mean, in facilities, we've discussed the aspect that it's not a case of empty rooms all day long. It's a case of, there are rooms that are empty during certain portions of the day, but changing the use of those throughout the day might be difficult. But I mean, it sounds like this is specifically geared towards the, the woodshop, which is, is not used, it's used as storage right now essentially, right?
It's the, the robotics team uses that.
The ro- robotics team, okay, gotcha.
But this is in a situ- sorry, there, this is in a situation where we'd have to consider el- the elementary principal coming up to Campbell and splitting time between two buildings, nothing like that, right?
Well, I mean, he's still be-
Is that directed to me? Cause I answered that earlier.
I'm just making sure I'm clear.
Yeah, so I just, to be clear, so it would be totally up to us to design what that supervision model would look like. We could have an off-site um administrator who's in charge. We have a special ed director who's based out of Campbell at the district level, who has a lot of um oversight with preschool. Uh we have a high school principal who's there, we have assistant principals. So we would be able to, uh we, we also have a lead teacher in the preschool. We're paying a stipend for a lead. So there's a lot of ways that we could structure this in order to make sure that we have the right supervision.
And again, it sounds like Brian's gonna come in with ideas too.
Well, I guess my only other question is with like OT and PT, right? So we're talking about-
Tina deserves a chance.
It's okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Finish up with the OT, PT and services.
Well, my, my question was just that, you know, obviously services, like we're, we're talking about building in travel time, but like, do they actually have the ability to build in travel time? Cause I know, like in a perfect world, it's like, oh yeah, you could build in travel time, but if they're already like back to back to back to back, is that even an opportunity?
I think right now, they don't even have time built in to go to the bathroom, so.
That, well, that's my, that's my concern, I mean-
Let's just be honest with that, but I-
I'll invite you up because I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Perfect, right?
Let's go ladies.
You need your checklist. Can I actually see? I don't live in Litchfield, but I work for you guys.
Please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. While we're on point, we might also talk about it, right?
Right. You wanna go first?
Um so I am one of the preschool teachers. Our other one was gonna be here, but she couldn't. Um we've compiled a list of different day-to-day things that we've thought of that this wouldn't work for us or money-wise, we'd need more staff for them. Um I can share that with all of you if you'd like, but.
If you could some, maybe summarize in an email to the board, that'd be helpful, right? I mean, right now, it's very exploratory.
Or, or to superintendent.
Right.
Because I've had multiple conversations with Principal Mitchell about this. First, I'm hearing that there are concerns coming from the staff, right? So again, we're sitting here in a board meeting where the administrative team has had, how many onsite meetings have we had with Dan? Two, at minimum. We've talked about all of this. I've received zero pushback or concerns that have been raised, right? So now, all of a sudden, we're hearing from staff with concerns. That, that bothers me because we've been engaged.
Well, but it's also the right time to do it, right? Because we're, we're, we're still exploring options.
Or somebody, yeah, if there are concerns, I'd be more than happy to go over.
We've sat down with Dan and talked about all of this and he led us to believe this was not going to be happening. So I think that that's very concerning.
I think it's very concerning that Principal Mitchell has not uh shared that with me. So I, what I would like is an opportunity to sit down with the staff and hear what their concerns are and be able to flush that out. Because again, we've had onsite multiple meetings.
And to answer some of your questions, um those are some of our shared concerns.
And to answer some of your questions, those are some of our shared concerns. Right now, next year, they will be down two speech therapists, and I will be down one OT. When you move preschool, they are, early intervention is key, they are a big piece of our, of our day. So things like, I push into preschool right now for all kids, because it's a special ed preschool. So you can't just grow it out, because there are, you have to have a ratio of special ed to regular ed. I push in, and that allows me to identify kids that should be on the radar, which then leads to, and work with them without bringing them out of preschool. So that they're developing their play skills and their social skills. And then typically what happens is when they get up to kindergarten, then I start to pull them out, first grade. That won't be able to happen, because I cannot spend that much of my time up at the high school right now, scheduling-wise. Right now, as it is, like, I see kids, I pop in, I come back out, we, I see some kids, I pop back in in the afternoon. Because think about it, they have a Monday, Tuesday program, they have a Wednesday, Thursday program, then they have two, a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday program in the afternoon.
In two different classes.
In two different, so you're talking, we would have to be able to drive up to the high school.
And we are opposite sides of the building, I'm in the portable and she is by the cafeteria, if that helps too, for you.
Yeah, so we would have to be running back and forth multiple times in a day. So then that would mean then, any kids that are on caseload would need to be pulled out. So when you're considering space needs, where are we gonna service these kids? Because the high school hallway is not gonna work the same as the hallway at Griffin does. When, I mean, I have a room at Griffin, but I've had to pull kids out to the hallway in the middle school. And we do do some activities in the hallway, like on scooter boards and things like that, for the classroom that's halfway down the building. How do we do that in the high school?
It sounds like additional discussion needs to happen, we need to flush this out a bit more. So it sounds like there's some actions happening here between the superintendent and Mr. Mitchell and, and the staff as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we shouldn't be incurring any cost on exploring this until some of this stuff is hashed out.
Absolutely, absolutely, we need to flush this out.
But I do think that the, I do think that the appropriate channel to like, we, we do need to figure out where the breakdown was.
To be clear, I would not be here tonight asking the board about this if I had any reservations that have been raised, right? You're also looking at an eloping window here, because if you're gonna get an architect on board to be able to help us price out just what this is. I don't know if the door is five thousand or ten thousand dollars, and we need two of them, right? So we have to begin to at least put together a preliminary budget of what that would look like. And to me, the worst thing is to miss the window of summertime to be able to do this. You know, you, you are aware of how tight it is at GMS. And so other answers that I don't have are like, where is the counselor going? Where is the school psychologist gonna be able to work out of, what's the dedicated space? So we need to move relatively quickly to figure this out, or take a year and limp through another year, right? Just accept that we're in this environment, we'll limp through another year and make it somebody else's, so.
I think we can start discussing right now, or not right now, but like, we can discuss, what is it, what do we need to do to actually gather the information? It sounds like there was a, a breakdown in communication somewhere. I'm gonna, I'm always gonna assume good, no, no bad will, right? So some, somewhere there was a breakdown in communication, and we just gotta figure out where that was, so that, obviously, I agree. I, I don't think, I would hope that you wouldn't be presenting something to us if there was all these concerns that you were just ignoring, I don't think that's the case. But there was a breakdown in communication somewhere, so, you know, we need to solve that problem.
Majority time is of the essence, right?
Right, and so that's.
And I think this board's willing to move, but I think we need to flush out, make sure it's the right, the right approach for everybody.
Also, to take into consideration what the facilities committee is gonna look at as far as what happens with GMS.
Yes, but I don't know that we can wait for that.
We have to find a place for our students now, yeah.
Right, because we're gonna have space constraints next year at Griffin, next year being in September.
So we've had space constraints at Griffin forever, when my kids were there, music was on a cart, before, when she was there, art was on a cart. Like, we've had constraint conditions forever.
Yes.
As a taxpayer, the idea of, you can't take the playground out of Griffin that preschool uses, because we have another program that will still be there, that still uses it.
For safety.
For safety. And so you're talking a whole new playground, you're talking fencing, you're talking about doorway egress, you're talking about potential retrofitting other spaces or pulling spaces so that services can be provided in places. As a taxpayer, I would rather look for a long-term solution of, do we need to make Campbell a junior, senior high?
Okay, but that's not, that's not the purview of this discussion.
No, I know, but I'm saying, like, financially.
Right, right, but, but we have a facilities committee that's dedicated to that, right? What's being presented to us right now is an urgent need relative to preschool for next year.
Right.
What you're asking about is a much bigger conversation.
I didn't mean to ask about that, I meant to say, cost-wise for this preschool move.
Right.
Make it, make it reasonable for a taxpayer also, along with the staff.
Right, you always consider that in everything, yeah.
And then, I don't know if, as far as the building administration, but they need him to go down for behaviors, you're talking about subs at Griffin, then we pull people and we have, you know, it's, it's a different setup. I don't know if they've considered some of those things, but in the meetings.
It's amazing that Boe figured all this out.
All right, so why don't we leave it at there? Thank you, thank you for sharing your thoughts.
We just need to look into it a little deeper and allay some of your concerns and, you know, make sure that everything's being addressed and we're all one big happy family moving forward.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate your input. All right, we'll move on to end-of-year activities, please.
So next up, end-of-year activities, that's the, the link that the board has. So I just wanted to make sure you had the link, I think you've all seen it, I think you reviewed it, but I just wanted to make sure that you had it available there.
Do you two, I suppose, you're ins for consolidating all that?
Yes, yeah, so we just need a couple more people to go through and make sure we're all covered for everything, I think.
Nothing, my initials aren't on there.
Down that end of the table.
Are you even a board member, I don't know.
Yes, I am, I am.
Hint, hint, but we did this last year, and I found this really helpful, because it made sure that at least one of us was present at some of these important activities for the.
I will go through this and put my.
I will do the same.
Oh, good, it wasn't just me.
No, no, no. I went to the veterans' thing.
That's why I said, it's both, it's that end of the table, but.
You made me feel better, Peter, thank you.
I can do it at home, man.
Tina, I just want to acknowledge, I don't know how to resolve the conflict with senior night, it always ends up being on Wednesday. As long as you have a Friday graduation, senior night's gonna be on Wednesday, and it's gonna coincide with a board meeting, so I, yeah.
Again, my thought was just, if one of us can cover it and go over there and come over here for the meeting or however, it's gonna work, just to have. That's the one on the fifth, so you, that is a school board meeting, it's also senior night at six o'clock. So if, if I can start here and then head over there, or whatever it is, but just to be able to.
Back in the day, when we had our school board meetings at the high school, we would all kind of adjourn the meeting and then, and head over and, you know, observe and at least make an appearance and then head back.
Or maybe that's, maybe we look at alternating the time, the start time of that meeting. Right, maybe we get through the, then we start at five, and we get through a good portion of our agenda, so you can participate.
Again, I just think it's important for senior night, I know we're all gonna be at graduation, but that's, that's a big night for them, to get their awards and stuff.
Before we move on to the next item, just, because I want to make sure that I, my brain's like in the right place from the last thing we were talking about. What is, like, I know Dr. Jettie's, it sounds like he's gonna go back and talk to Mr. Mitchell. Are we trying to have any sort of, like, action item between now and our next meeting as it relates to, like, figuring out what it would take to investigate that? If, if that were something that we wanted to explore, the preschool at the, at the high school, in terms of like, if we have to engage, you know, do we have to do an RFP for an architect or something like that?
Well, I don't think we're at the RFP, I think it's just an estimate.
No, no, but I just, but I'm, but I'm wondering, what, what are, what are, would our next step be? Like, should we do, is that something we need to be figuring out between now and the next meeting? Or are we just waiting for Dr. Jettie to go back and talk to Mr. Mitchell to come back to us again and rehash some of the stuff that we've already talked about?
I think we need to wait and let the process flush itself out, hopefully that can happen in the next couple of weeks.
And is this something that facilities should be involved in, or no?
No.
I don't think so.
All right, that's all I needed, thank you.
So what, what I was, so hang on, we're in two topics. So just if I may, I want to finish the end-of-year activity thing, I'm gonna come back to the other, nope, you're good.
I thought we were done.
Just Heidi, at the end of your document, I added the two source links that you used, so I just wanted the full board to see that. So you have Heidi's abbreviated Reader's Digest version of, hey, we ought to hit these things. And then you have the GMS, LMS, full, full end-of-year activity. And then Campbell did not want to muddy that up, so they created their own documents, so there you have it all. If anybody's questioning, that's your source, it's all there.
I have one question about a CHS event, is it all right if I?
Which event?
Trebeshay Day.
I have no clue.
Ooh, that sounds fun.
Has that been scheduled, or?
Yeah, it's next week on Thursday.
Oh, great. I'm currently downing soda, because my son needs to soda bottles.
It's like an end-of-the-year activity, so they didn't include it on that, which is something that math and science.
Would I be able, is that all right if I were to come?
Yeah.
I've never been.
Fire off those rockets.
Sounds fun.
Wear a helmet.
I, I gotta get through all the soda we have to drink first. Thank you.
All right, now back to preschool for a moment?
Yeah, so what, what I was gonna ask the board, here's what I worry about, coming in on June 5th without, and saying, we're not even sure what this would look like. Because if we find out the budget is a quarter million dollars, it's off the table, like, we don't have that capacity, right? But I was gonna ask for permission to engage with Dave Bailey, when we did the middle school canopy project and redesigning that front office space. Dave did a very nice job for us at a reasonable price. And so I envision it sort of in that scope of doors, toilets, and so forth, just so that, and fencing, et cetera, just so we get a ballpark on it. But that would be up to the board, because, you know, at this point, you know, it might be something that, depending on what the total budget ends up being, it could be something that we could recoup out of the impact fee money.
Does it cost, I mean, I, this sounds like a stupid question, does it cost money to get an estimate? Like, if he were to.
It's gonna cost, Dave's gonna have to come in and measure and, you know, give some.
What are we talking about, like a thousand dollars, or, I mean?
I mean, I guess my, my concern is that we don't know what we're, we don't know what we need quoted, and that's like my, my concerns.
I don't mind the idea, I think it's premature, I think we need to wait and let it flush out. I don't know what the board's thoughts are.
But I, I think there needs to be some direction as to like, like.
I think that is the direction, right, is to let it flush out, see what.
Okay, so what does that mean? That means that we come back in a, in a month and we say, so where are you at?
Not a month, but three weeks.
It is a month, three weeks now.
June 5th, I think June 5th is when it happens, and then hopefully there can be a quick turnaround on an estimate and.
It's when what happens, though, that's what I'm asking.
When it comes back to the board.
It has to come to the board.
What's coming back to the board?
There's some type of consensus or agreement between.
A recommendation.
The building administration, super, right, about a recommendation about what they'd like to do.
And I do feel like in the meantime, we, we should also be putting together a budget for the project, so that we can hit go.
We don't have a budget for the project, aside from impact fees.
Well, I, what's, we should have an estimate of what it's going to cost, and so I think.
We don't know what the scope of the project's gonna be.
Right, and I think as a board, we should be, at least be asking for certain information to be brought back to us. I don't think we're giving any direction.
Like, I just heard that, you know, we can't move playground equipment, so do I need to scope a new playground? I, I have no idea.
But if we don't, but if we don't ask, if we don't give some direction of what we're asking for, I'm afraid that on June 5th, we're gonna be sitting here like, so, do you have something for us? And it may or may not work.
There has to be some consensus, right, with the staff, the administration.
There does and there doesn't, because again, I, I mean, I hate to say it, but this is an administrative decision, he has to work through it with his staff. There may be staff that are unhappy either way with whatever the decision is, whether it's you stay put and art goes on a cart and music goes on, or whatever it is, so.
But as, but like, here's an example, as a school board member, and as the people that are held accountable for tax decisions in this town, I think it's imperative that we say, like, I've said to Dr. Jettie now in this meeting, I think it's imperative that we know, what can we, what is the maximum number of our students we can, we can put in there? Because we're talking about spending money to retrofit facilities that we should be thinking from a.
Long-term.
Long-term perspective on. And instead of giving direction, we're saying, come back to us and, and give us an idea. It's like, I think we need, as a board, need to be giving some direction as to what we want an idea on.
I'd also like to hear from community members, right? We're giving no time for community to react to this, none.
Because it's an emergency.
Right, we don't, we don't have it, I, I recognize that we don't have a lot of time to, to solve the problems, right? So I, I get that piece of it, I'm just saying, I, I think, you know, again, I, I don't know, I think when we say, it's premature, come back to us. I just don't know what I'm expecting them to come back to us with. I, I would feel more comfortable giving some more direction as to what, what do we want to know.
I would like to know if there's consensus amongst the buildings and the superintendent, right, to put forward a plan to the school board for recommendation of what we do and how we action.
And how big it should be and what it should look like. I don't think, given the circumstances of it being two, three months before September or August, that we can talk about growth and trying to grow the program beyond the forty, because the reason the forty was there, we've, we've been through the personnel that's required for the forty, that's very detailed in terms of the two teachers that are hired, the pairs that are hired for it. There's a lot that goes into the growth question, and so I don't know that necessarily I'm looking to have that piece explored before we do this. But I am looking to, I would want to have some information on what they would want, which rooms it's going in, what those rooms.
But I think that, to me, right, I'm not saying let's do a full analysis, I'm just saying, you know, if you can decide between, okay, we have a room that can fit thirty students, and we have a room that could fit fifty students, right? Like, it might make sense to say, go with the.
But I mean, it's as simple as, it has to be on the first floor. It's as simple as, like, there's not a lot of classroom space on the first floor. So, I mean, I think we're putting more thought into it than we need to. This needs to come from admin to us as a recommendation, who has vetted all of those things, and they be able to say to us, this is what, there are some concerns, there may not be complete agreement, but this is what the path is, that we're recommending that you school board approve and authorize us to go get an estimate.
That's what I believe Dr. Jettie was coming to us originally for tonight.
Yeah, I'm a little uncomfortable with how, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling kinda awkward for Mr. Mitchell right now, so.
That's why I think we need to allow time to sort this out.
Agreed, I agree, because I think there's, we gotta, we gotta let the process play itself out, not on TV.
All right, let's move on to the co-curricular LEA Appendix B that I have in front of me.
Yep, so the co-curricular committee went back, as you know, the board, the, the new agreement with the LEA had a total of, I think it was three hundred thousand dollars available for the co-curricular program. The committee sat down, took the current co-curricular stipend schedule, examined all the ones that have been approved by the board in the past. And so we added those into Appendix B, and we took the remaining money and distributed that between the tiers, so that the LEA and the, the team, the Appendix B team, has come up with that final document, so that'll become part of the collective bargaining agreement.
So is this a change to the CBA?
This is, when we negotiated the dollar, we indicated we would sit down to disperse that later. And there's a mechanism in the CBA about the committee and how they go about doing that work. So we had multiple meetings with the president and members of the LEA, and our athletic directors were involved, Holly and I were involved, and that is the final distribution.
This was just livened this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to even look at this.
Yeah, that's fine.
I am not necessarily comfortable signing it without understanding it, is there a budget impact to this? Like, I, I don't know.
So this is all part of the contract that we nego, through the LEA, we negotiated this, this was approved by the taxpayers as part of the contract, and it was, the number was included on the warrant, so this is.
Next year's budget.
Correct, so these, this is just the dispersment of it. So rather than the LEA negotiation teams trying to figure out what the dispersment should be, it was determined that there should be a committee in this, between the LEA and between Holly and, and the district, to be able to figure out, how do we disperse this, and so this is how it is. I'm totally fine with waiting another two, two or three weeks to approve it, but I think, just for background purposes, that's the, the reason why, and that's the explanation in terms of how they're trying to spread out this pool of money amongst the extra, there are the co-curriculars.
So with that, if the board is comfortable with me signing on the board's behalf, I'm glad to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve, if the board is comfortable with it. If anyone wants more time, speak up and I'll withdraw my motion. But I'll make a motion to approve the modified stipend schedule contract.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Sims, second by Ms. Harrison, additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries five zero zero, and I will sign both copies right now. Thank you for that one. Moving on, in our agenda this evening, we'll move into business operations, and Mr. Totten, you're up with the BA report.
Great, thanks, so, second meeting of the month, so you have.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're right, you didn't skip minutes, that's my, yeah, I'm skipping, I'm skipping Doug, I'm like, let's move on.
I don't have to.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, no, don't get out of it that easily.
So you have last month's financials, I, I know the bigger thing that we're probably gonna talk about is fund balance, but before that, that's first on the agenda. I don't know if there's any questions on that or transfers before we go into fund balance.
No questions on the actual day-to-day reports, I did have some questions on Fund Thirty.
Yep.
Right, and making sure that, just the board understands any ins and outs of Fund Thirty as of recent. I'd like to get a picture of, like, what's remaining in the B of A lease, is there anything remaining, like, where do we stand with file? Like, where do we send the file payments to, to North Branch, or what's outstanding? 'Cause I also understand there's some unknown contract or change orders that we're also thinking about as well.
Uh, yep, so we can go over Fund 30, so, Fund 30, again, is for project, bigger project work, and in this case, it's in regards to both the elementary school for pre-bond work and the middle school. So, and it's been funded by multiple things, so the larger part of how it's been funded has been its lease, but we also raised through the vote of taxpayers, money, I think it was about $470,000 to fund the continuing and completion of the work as well, and, you know, some of the elementary work could also be funded by reserve funds, capital project reserve funds. So as we look at that, if we kind of separate out the elementary for a second and just look at LMS, we have our North Branch bucket, and then we have our non-North Branch bucket. So again, the municipal lease can only be used to pay for North Branch work, and that has been paying for North Branch work, and then this year, we've also been now using some of the local taxpayer money to pay for, for that work as well. So we are on our two last payments to North Branch, which we have not paid yet. So that's for work that's already been done, that's been completed, so everything that we have asked to be installed has been installed at the middle school, everything matches the model numbers, everything was installed correctly, but what we're, what we're still working on is, is that making sure the operation of everything is consistent. Uh, so, we have two more payments to go, and $3,300, $3,400 will come from local money, and the $20,124 will then almost zero out our municipal lease, I think we'll be left with like 50 cents in our municipal lease. So when we sign that, we also have to sign off something that says everything is in working condition. That's why we're kind of holding off on that last payment, because we're still working with our commissioning agent for that work as well. So we have the North Branch work, which we have two known payments to make, and then we have the non-North Branch work, which has consisted of Wendy Hill, who has been the architect on record, both, you know, electrical, engineering, architect type of thing, we have no more payments for Wendy Hill Associates for the middle school, so that's all done. We are still working with Resilient Buildings, which is our commissioning agent. Now, with the fact that when we've had problems with compressors for HVAC equipment, which isn't just a Litchfield thing, it's happened to multiple buildings that have had work done or, or been kind of created post-pandemic as a kind of quality control of compressors and other units that have been put into buildings, wasn't the same degree as it was pre-pandemic. So at times when Resilient Building has come out to test, not everything's been working. So that has then increased the amount of hours that they need to be engaged in the work at, at the middle school. So they have finished a preliminary draft of the commissioning work, but they now, they know they have to, they finished that knowing that they have to go out and retest. So we have about $2,000 more to pay them out for work that hasn't been done, and an additional amount that we're in the works of paying them for work that was kind of over the original agreement. But at the end of the day, if, if you're putting over $5 million into a building, we need to make sure it's, it's working well. So if we're, we're spending a little bit more on commissioning, that's just where we need to go. It's, it's, the idea is, let's get the middle school up to a good spot that can be used for years and years and years without that much more money being put into it, so that's, that's our goal with that. So with all that being said, with where we expect to kind of have our revenue come in and our expenses, we would expect to be down roughly and needing to come up with an additional revenue amount of about $18,500. And so the reason might be, why are we at that point?
Is there a tab or where I can look to see that?
There is not, but I can get that to the board later, so, so why would we be needing to, to get more revenue? So when we looked at what was gonna be completed for LMS, that was December of '22, we were at that point, when we were making the budget to, to finish up this year. So it was, the, the numbers for that budget came from working with mainly North Branch as far as what's left, as far as work on the contract, as well as what are some potential change orders that need to happen. Now unfortunately, with working with them, it didn't, it didn't bring out all the change orders, 'cause again, with a, when, we've had change orders for masonry allowance, which went over, because there was a lot more infills that they had to fix. So as soon as they start touching something, they need to bring it up to code. So there were a lot of open gaps between above the ceiling tiles, but below the roof, between the rooms that needed to be filled, either with foam or with brick, or lentils to kind of, to have better support. So there's been different change orders that have happened that weren't necessarily projected at that time. So that is the majority of the reason why we would still need to, why we still need to have about $18,500. So later on, when we look at end-of-year fund balance, obviously one of the first things we need to do is we need to zero out any of our funds, we need to get our food service fund to zero, we need to get our capital projects fund to zero. So you'll see, I think, in right now, there's about $19,000 that I put as a placeholder to get the capital projects fund to zero. So, I wish we had more of a crystal ball back in December of '22 to kind of get us to where we are now, but at that point, not all of the building, if you look, if you remember, was, was opened up. They were mainly working at, at the fifth and sixth grade wings at that time, hadn't really done any work in the eighth grade wing or the cafeteria or the seventh grade wing as well. So typically, when you start a, a project of over $5 million, you would have some money set aside for contingency. We, that was not the case for this, so we're doing our best to kind of finish it, and, you know, we've been not, there, there's some, there's some contingencies, change order money, that we can't say no to. We can't say, no, you can't fill the masonry holes, so they have to do that. But there's been other things that have come up where it's like, is that needed? No, it's not needed, okay, we're not gonna do that, so.
There was no contingency quoted in this project?
There was no owner's Litchfield contingency in the project. There was a contingency for North Branch that they built in for themselves, but there was no own Litchfield contingency for the project.
And just for, you know, as a facilities member, for future reference of the, you know, mistakes aren't remade over and over again, who, who would have been responsible for, like, telling us to do, to have that contingency or to propose that contingency in the project, would that be the owner's rep?
I, I think an owner's rep would do that, so, you know, when we worked with, as far as the elementary bond, there was a, a healthy contingency in there that would have been for Litchfield itself. So, it's tough, because as you talk about what happens in, in education, not all, you don't always have $5 million projects or building a new school, so it's not, it's not typical for, for necessarily education, they come up every once in a while, so I think that, that's where you get the benefit of an owner's rep coming in to definitely guide, guide the school in the right direction, so.
And, and if I may, I think the other piece is kind of a shift in the way schools go about building projects, right? So in the past, you would get a, you would get a bid price from the construction management company, but they were doing the project based upon, you know, they bid against other companies, and then they had a contingency built in, which frankly, if they didn't use, they pocketed, right? When you go to a construction manager model, if they come under that, then we profit on that, 'cause we don't spend the money, right? So we allocate $5 million, but if it only costs 400, or 4.5 million, the additional money stays in our pocket, we don't pay that as part of the construction management piece. So I think it was a misunderstanding on our part about whose contingency that is, 'cause when you have a construction manager, it's our, we can perceive that as our contingency, 'cause they've built that in, and if it's not tapped into or utilized, we don't pay it. Versus a bid project where you're gonna pay the, the $5 million, and, and the story, and if they build it for less, they pocket that as additional profit.
But we did have an owner's rep on this, right?
On the LMS project that we had done.
We're an architect of record, but not an owner's rep, and so North Branch, their contingency has also been zeroed out, partly because the project took longer to get to, partly because there were things that, change orders that needed to happen, and we said, well, we're not paying for that, that seems like it, it should have been known type of thing. So then therefore, the work still had to be done, it would come out of their, their contingency at that point.
So I think, you know, lesson I learned in this is that when you go with a construction manager, who is working for the district, and they build in a contingency, you can eyeball that and say, that's potential savings that we're not gonna tap into, but we should build in additional contingency above and beyond that amount, just in case. Because in the case of North Branch, I mean, they discovered a boatload of compliance things that they had to fix, like, once they see it and have touched it, they then have to repair it, and that was another piece that was underestimated by us in doing the planning, to be honest. So I think what it circles back to is have the owner's rep, have them advising, and set aside a contingency that is in our bank account, above and beyond the dollar amount that the project is gonna cost, because you just never know what you're gonna get into.
All right, thank you.
So even though there are these additional costs, you know, due to the contingency, it's for work which is, you would want to get done, work which you would typically have to get done at some point as well, and it's for additional work beyond the scope that North Branch was gonna do. So it's, it's not like it was work within the contract, if they put, let's say, $30,000 in the contract for an allowance for, for masonry kind of work type of thing, if, as soon as you go over $30,000, well, now it's up to Litchfield to pay.
But it also wasn't, it really was an optional work, it's not like we elected, it's not like they said, hey, you should also do this while you're at it, you don't have to, they said to us, we had to do it, right?
The majority of, of the change orders were, were not optional, yeah. So there, there were a couple here and there that were optional, like, they were, they were painting the doors, and as we were walking around the building, you know, we noticed that the fire escapes, you know, as, as people would leave their, their rooms, the, the painting on the railings, which they should hold on to for safety, was, was crumbling. And so my concern at that time is, okay, you, you've got something that's used for safety, are people gonna grab hold of that, knowing that it looks like something you don't wanna grab hold of, it looks rusty type of thing? So since they had the people out there, we decided to have them paint that as well. But it was for, for hopefully like common sense things like that, that you'd wanna kind of take care of, that had a benefit to them, so.
Thank you.
So Doug, is there something in here that shows what we've spent on the LMS project? It's the total that we've made out so far?
So, there has been a, let me just find it. So there has been a Fund 30 compiled sheet, which has been open to the public now for a little over a year, I'm not expecting everyone to remember everything that I do, so, I'm, I'm not, I'm just bringing up that it has been open to the public. So it's called Fund 30 Compiled, and it's FY '19 through '24. So this has been updated as of April of 2024. So that is available, and what it is, it has a summary tab, which kind of combines the revenue and expenses, ties things back to the audit.
Is that on the report that we're looking at?
No, no, so, I mean, I can send that to the board right now, so you can-
Does it, does that also have what the original outlay was gonna be? What I'm trying to get to is, how much are we over on LMS? As we're close to the end of the day here.
I, I think that is a, that's a hard, I, I don't want to sound like wishy-washy here, but that, that's a hard thing for me to answer, because I wasn't there during the budget, and for so, some people are gonna be like, well, you're over LMS as soon as you're over 4.95 million, 'cause that's what the municipal lease was for. Other people are gonna say, well, that was part of the North Branch portion of the work, knowing that other portions of North Branch were gonna come from ESSER funds, and that there were other things that we were paying for as well, which included architects at, at LMS as well. So it depends on who you ask is gonna be the answer of how much over you're at. So what I was doing for this compiled sheet is just, okay, here's all the money that went into it, all the expenses, and here's where all the revenue came to.
Doesn't it include the ESSER money that went to it? For some reason, I have in my head, it was like seven, six point nine million.
It includes everything, so if you look at, at the sheet right now, if you look at the middle school, you'll see that the middle school as of now, April 2024, so it doesn't have much more to go as far as expenses, but is at 8.75 million. So that's on the summary sheet, and you can kind of look year by year how you got there, as well as year by year, the revenue that kind of matched up with that as well. So it's definitely not, it's, it's a lengthier spreadsheet, 'cause there's multiple tabs at the bottom, so I don't know if it's more beneficial to kind of redirect people there today, and then we can kind of talk about it next time, too, if people wanted to.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just resharing the link, so it's in front of the board.
Yeah, so I think I just reshared it to the board.
Oh, you did, okay.
He just emailed it to us, yeah.
Oh, excellent, oh, I didn't get it yet. Oh, there it is, perfect, just came in.
So, but again, the summary page is bringing it all together, and you'll see the different tabs at the bottom, which are revenue, as well as each year by vendor or expense. So if you look at the vendor, you know, we have some vendors who did work for the elementary school and the middle school, that's kind of why it's labeled that way, or if you go to fiscal year '24 expense, it's more by location. So what work got done at the district, elementary, or, or LMS. As you go further back, you'll see that there was work done at the high school as well, because there was energy work there for, for lighting and things like that. So the revenue came from a combination of both local funds, federal funds, rebates from Eversource, as well as seed grants, which is kind of state funds as well, so it's a combination of, of all of that. That brings you to the revenue, the expenses.
All right, thank you for the thorough report.
You're welcome.
I opened a can of worms with that one.
And we can, I mean, it's, it's important, and I think, you know, as, as the board has a chance to relook at it, we can definitely, you know, we're back in three weeks as well, so. All right, so, back to the board report, I don't know if we wanna move into end-of-year fund balance at this point?
Well, any other questions on financials? There were no transfers exceeding the 5,000 threshold, any comments or questions on just the regular report? Okay, so let's move into the end-of-year numbers.
All right, great, so, thank you, Ms. Ames, for reminding everyone that they are projections at this time.
Guaranteed.
Capitalized, bolded.
I did it all, it's all preliminary at this point.
We are not to the penny at this point, so, every, every week that goes by, we get closer and closer and closer. So, there is, again, another spreadsheet, so that spreadsheet also has multiple tabs. So the goal is to kind of, again, for, for people, whether it be the board or people at home, they don't look at this stuff every day, so it's kind of important to kind of set a stage of, of why we're using certain numbers. So if we look at that spreadsheet, you can see there's a tab called appropriations or revenue, so these are the big numbers that we're, we're adding up to. So if we look at what's been appropriated or what is budgeted for us to spend, overall, we can see, you know, that there's, there's no surprises here. The first $26,767,000 was voted on by the town, that information goes into the state, gets approved by DRA as well, but that's, that's what the town has approved. The next amount that we add on, that $246,000, that's money that came from fiscal year '23 that the board voted on to use this year as well. Again, a lot of the stuff that we focused on was safety things or items that would save money overall. For example, there was a multi-year reading program where if the board put in $53,000 in addition, we got, we got an extended savings if, if we paid it upfront than if we paid it like two or three years from that. So again, looking to make decisions that are, are good for the students, good for the, the staff as far as safe, as well as financially good for the town. So that's that number of $27,13,403. So where do we get that from, where, where does that come from, the revenues? So part of it, again, is, is grants funded, grants funded for every, we can only spend dollars that we have available in grants. The next one is food service, again, we are going to have to make food service whole there, but the idea going into the year was, okay, 694 roughly of expenses, therefore you're gonna raise 694,000 of revenue. The next three are coming from fiscal year '23, so we, we, the town decided to vote 350,000 in to reserve funds, so that was the building maintenance fund, capital improvement fund, and employee benefit funds. And again, this isn't what the town had decided March of this year, it was March of the previous year, so March of 2023. So that's using reserve funds, end-of-year funds to make that. So then we have the encumbrances, as well as the fund balance, so again, the fund balance, the- So again, the fund balance, the eventual fund balance doesn't go back to taxpayers in the forms of a check, but what it does is, it means that for that coming year, that you get to raise that much less in taxes. So taxes are decreased by that, by that amount. So what that leaves us with is that 24,705,000. So the reason I'm kind of starting with revenue is that fund balance, at the end of the day, comes from over revenue, and then you add on to that things that are underexpensed. So we have both of those contributing to our fund balance. So if you look at the revenue tab, you can see where we were projected, and these, again, these projected is what goes into the state, it, it's what then goes into forming the tax base for this fiscal year as well. So, and then you can see how much revenue we have to date, and expected kind of revenue kind of moving forward. Some of these numbers are exact, some of these numbers might, might change up a little bit, but you can see that we're over revenue by about $123,000. So the majority of that came from special ed aid. So special ed aid goes to students who their, their cost of education is three and a half times the average cost in, in New Hampshire, so the New Hampshire average cost for, for education. Last year, though, they also added on for students 21 and 22, because it became mandatory for, for students at that age who could benefit from still being in public schools, that they, they extended it from age 21 to 22. So that year, they said, well, we'll reimburse everything. So the reason why we weren't projecting all of that is because they say we're going to reimburse everything, but they also say, if we don't have enough money, we'll prorate it. And they all, so there's also a lot of going back and forth between us and the state. So you have what you think you might get back in special ed aid, and then, you know, working with the DRA, most towns budget for, to receive back about 50 or 60% of what they think they're going to get back. So we just cut it in the middle at, at 55%. So we got back, you know, kind of closer to what we thought we were on again. So that's a majority of why we are over. We also have some tuitioned in students that we don't necessarily, because Litchfield only has one, two, three, four students who are tuitioned in, so it's not something that we rely on, and it's something which that family can make a decision at any time, that they're not going to, they're going to stop to issuing. They, they might end up moving some further, further away type of thing. So we don't necessarily project, because we're, we're not necessarily receiving town that we're going to get any money in. So we've had two students come in, so that's another, a, a big influx of over projection too. So that money then also would then be the start of our fund balance. Next tab is the expenses tab. No matter what year it is, you're going to have expenses that are over budget, you're going to have expenses that are under budget. Again, because you're budgeting months ahead, you're budgeting 12 to 18 months, 20 months, months ahead type of thing, and things change. So some of the main things you can see are on, on the left, as far as what are some things that were over budget, but are still part of our e-finance reports. So when you look at e-finance reports, we don't want to look at them and say, oh, and then we have to pay for this. They're already in the e-finance reports. So we've been keeping track of it as we go on. Some of this stuff is, is very well-known for people, because we made motions to hire contracted services for custodians at the high school and middle school. And again, those are over-expensed for professional services, but it's not necessarily over-expensed for salaries, if you look at it as a salary for, for custodians. There still is that, that salary line, it's still going to be under-expensed at, at the end, end of the year type of thing. So there's also the CTE high school, you know, as far as we just have more students that are looking to take advantage of, of, of programs that more meet their needs, which is great for, great for the kids, and I would say, great for the state, because we know there's, there's workforce shortages in a lot of things that they learn at CTE, or a lot of the kids go from CTE to work, or they also use a lot of those skills as they go to college as well. So there's, there's different amounts there that you can see that we are going to be over as, as we now, and as we progress in the year. Then there is the middle column, which isn't much of it, and this is only because this has to do with our new reserve fund, which remember, we use to kind of flatten the effect of, of teachers saying, I think I'm going to retire. They put in for it, we raise the taxes for that, and then they decide not to retire, which is a good thing, you know? They, they keep on working with the students there. It's definitely a difficult decision on when you're going to retire, so we understand, kind of, I think I'm going to retire, but I'm not going to retire. So we had 178,756, because again, we get this down to the dollar, and each dollar's associated with a person type of thing. So that's money for people who said they were going to retire, that's not going to retire. Now, that money is going to go, and you can see the next thing, as far as under budget, it's, it's also going to go into the reserve fund, and then be eventually be paid out to, to these people. So that's a known kind of expense that, you know, we're eventually going to put that into Warren Article 7, into a reserve fund type of thing. So it's a known expense, it's not currently in the e-finance, because that has to be done, and we'll do that first week of July. So then we have things that, that are under budget. Again, no surprise, the main reason why we are under budget is positions. We keep, we're advertising, we got good places to work, and, but we don't have necessarily, mainly paraprofessionals who are applying for positions. This is not a Litchfield problem, this is a New Hampshire problem, it's more than a New Hampshire problem as well. But that's where most of our wages are coming from. We also have science at, at the high school, we weren't able to hire for fully, and then, you know, especially transportation is actually under budget, and then healthcare was under budget too. So again, these are, these are the main ones. There's other things that are under budget by 200 bucks, 300 bucks, things like that. So then we move into the next tab, which is end-of-year. So if we look at the revenue, over expected, and then we take an estimated amount of expenses under budget of about 1.2 million, that gets us to that 1.3 million. So there are things that we know we have to do with that 1.3 million before, before any other decisions are made. So one thing we have to do is, we have to make whole all the other funds, so that's food service. We, we've all come to the agreement that food service is not going to have revenue match expenses. Last year, we were in, in the hole about 140,000. We have raised money, we, I was able to work with Lauren today as far as where we see our expenses for the next couple of months, and where we see revenue for the next couple of months, and we believe we're going to be around 90,000 under this year. So again, this is not a surprise, the, the good part is, is that it's going in the right direction. So we just talked about the fact that the capital projects fund, we're going to have to kind of get that to zero as well. So that's going to be about 19,000 at the end of this year. One of our goals is to just be done with the middle school. So that, that should happen. Again, we are waiting for commissioning to come back, which is happening kind of online this week, and they'll be in person in, in one of the weeks coming up as well. So we believe we're in a, a much better spot as far as saying, the middle school is, is where it needs to be with its HVAC equipment. But we're, we're going to have to cover that 19,000 as well. Then we have what the town has approved this year. So, and that's transfers into reserve funds of the employee benefits, building maintenance, and capital improvements expendable trust fund. So that came from town votes. So that money comes out. The next thing we have, which is a board vote, again, the, the decision from the board was kind of do this year by year, so this, this board vote came last year during budgeting season, which was, okay, if there's an underspend in special education, because special education is sometimes hard to budget for, then that money would be coming back to the taxpayers. You know, as we talked about it during that time, we said, okay, there's some things that have to happen first, you know, as far as things that have to be funded first, but then, then we get to that part. So at that point...
Question?
Yep.
With respect to the underspend in special ed, on the prior page on expenses with out-of-district tuition, which was special ed, it's a, is that, is this 572 already netting out that 117?
It includes that 117. So, yeah, so that, that expenses page are examples of expenses of, that are under or over budget.
Right, so, okay, thank you.
So Doug, what is the, is the bulk of that, because we, is that parasalaries? Like, what specifically in the special ed budget did that?
The bulk of that would be the parasalaries. Yep.
It's, it's not that we overestimated on services needed, it's that we couldn't fill positions.
We could not fill positions that we wanted to fill, yep. So that were advertised to fill, yep, so.
I just wanted to make that clear.
And just, I want to make sure I, I have it right, but we've had unplanned out-of-district expenses...
Yep.
...that ate into that. So if it was just on cost savings from staff that we couldn't hire, the number would, would be higher, so. But imagine if we had been fully staffed...
Right, we would have been in the red that amount.
Then it would have been problematic, we would have had to potentially look at the fund, or maybe dipping into the fund or whatever. So I just, the board has to understand that it's not like we just had extra money.
No, but I think I do recall our discussion in budgeting, which was, you know, we want to be really careful to not under-budget special ed, because we can be in a really bad place, and this was what we committed to, was making sure that...
Right, right. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's, it's very clear that it wasn't that we under-budgeted, it's that we could not fill those positions. So for next year's budget, we want to be able to fill those positions, because they're...
But I think that this, this also goes a long way in, in showing what we, we're doing what we said we did, which was important, so.
Right, agreed.
And again, thank you for the town, because the town approved the Warren article, which bumped up the pay in a retro way, and, and this does include that as well. So we're still 572,000 under budget with that increased pay, which is really one of the only ways we're going to attract people to, is, is to have, not have the same pay that, that people started with the year. So you can see, before that, we had about $785,000 of fund balance, so the board would be able to kind of return all of that to, well, not return to the taxpayers, it would be able to be used to offset taxes. So you can see that that 572,000 gets deducted, but then it gets added back in at the bottom when we, when we talk about how much would be used to reduce taxes.
Yep.
So then the next thing is, is, I would say, kind of more sort of the choices. So we've had pre-bond work for the elementary school, which is around 41,000. There will be additional amounts to that, I don't think there'll be a lot more to that, it's, it's however more Facilities Group kind of engages with Kyle Barker between now and the end of the year is kind of the additional expenses to that as well. But again, that's only going to grow so much. So the decision to there would be, you know, does that come out of end-of-year funds? Or do you use a capital improvement expendable trust fund? No decision has to be made tonight, but just saying that's kind of where the decisions kind of start.
Have to pay it, so.
We have to, we have to pay it. Yep. So, and then after that are truly suggestions, ideas. There is no thought that all the stuff that's kind of in that, that light green boundary, that everything's going to be improved, it was, the board has asked for ideas as far as what could make sense to, to kind of spend money on this year in order to keep us moving forward how we want to move forward, kind of save schools, as well as things that just, just make sense. So these are ideas that have come from different schools, as well as the Emergency Management Committee, which involves kind of voices of police, fire as well. So as, as we kind of look down there, I think a key one, we did put number one, and that's to rekey GMS. So several years ago, there was a rekeying effort of LMS and, and the high school to, to have a key system, which worked, and therefore, if you're a classroom teacher, you'd get a classroom teacher key, which give you access to rooms, but, but not necessarily to the main office. So it provided safety, but it also allowed us to get brand-new keys, so all the keys that have been lost in the last 20, 30 years, no matter, you know, or might be out on the street, they, they no longer work type of thing. The decision was not to rekey GMS at that time, because they didn't know the future of GMS. Right now, we still don't know the future of GMS, but we know that the other schools are in a, in a better spot than GMS's. And so Dave walked GMS with the, the person who rekeyed the other schools, and we found out, we're actually not in a horrible spot with GMS, because they, they added locks on not too, not too long ago, and when they did, they changed the core out on a lot of the keys. So it's not like we're purchasing new cores for a lot of the locks, we're just changing the pins in the cores to, to match what would be new keys. So we originally thought we were going to be over 20,000, maybe even up to 30,000, but a decent amount of that work has been done. So that, some of these numbers, as you look to the right, are estimates, and some of them are firm. So this, this is a quote, I mean, I'm sure the quote might be, you know, $10,496, and I rounded up type of thing, but it is a known amount that we could sign the, sign the paper, and that would be how much it would cost. So I, I think, you know, as we look at that, that's been kind of number one on our mind. You can see there's, there's other things on there with safety, additional blue lights, radios for GMS, door sweeps in a way, stop the bleed kits, tourniquets, new intercom system, and there's other things that just make sense. LMS bathroom partitions, the, there was money in the budget two years ago to replace the bathroom partitions in eighth grade. Once everything kind of happened with us realizing we had to shift more money to LMS, the decision was, well, we're not doing anything else extra at LMS, we're not spending that money type of thing. So that was a decision that, that, that we made, and by, by we, I mean really I made type of thing. But the, but they, they haven't gotten any better in the last couple of years. So if you've been in the bathrooms there, they are not in good shape. So this would be a quote, and you can see the breakdown of the quote, whether we did the, the whole school, or just part of the school, kind of work it way that way. And again, we are not expecting a yes vote on, on all this stuff, and we're not expecting necessarily anything to be voted on today. I'm not necessarily going to go over other ones individually unless people want to ask questions.
No, I mean, I added a comment on the bathrooms, you know, one of the observations I've had just being in the schools over the past few years notably are the mirrors are terrible? Like, why are they all scratched up? And like, is that an opportunity where we can just look to replace some of the mirrors in these, in the bathrooms?
Yeah.
I mean, they're pretty...
A lot of the fixtures too, like I've noticed at the high school, a lot of the sinks are...
They just need to be refreshed, for sure.
So at LMS in particular, like the sinks, I think are original, it's that blue laminate that has been washed and scrubbed so many times, there's no, there's no surface left really, they are in really rough shape.
Exactly, great point, right? So I'd be interested in like, what, if we're going to rehab the bathrooms here, like, even for Campbell, to some extent with some of this stuff, like, what would be the cost for that? Because I, I do think that would be a good use of putting money into our facilities using end-of-year money.
Yeah, so we got the cost coming for the, the mirrors. We could cost out, I mean, it's, it's, it depends on how much work you want to do at, at the buildings, you know, are we talking about, you know, sinks at the middle school and, and Campbell? You know, but we can cost out what people want to cost out, so. So we got the mirrors coming, and are you looking to get...
Do you think it's worthwhile seeing a number on sinks too, and seeing what?
I don't know, because I'm looking, as I scroll down the page, you know, it, we're whittling away at, at year-end funds.
We are, but I don't know that necessarily always has.
And a lot of these things...
You won't necessarily approve all of them. No, true, but there are a few that I would vote to approve, but there's no amount attached as of yet, so that running total...
Could change.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to get numbers and then have the board make a decision.
All right, so sinks at which school?
Well, anything that's, I mean, I'd have to defer to, I guess, Dave Ross at this point, right? But things that are, you know, really in need of a refresher or rehab...
Because we got three schools, we got the elementary school too.
Well, not GMS.
Okay, so sinks at CHS.
Unless there's something materially broken that needs to be addressed.
And, and that stuff, I mean, if something breaks, we do replace it. So, I mean, you have, the town has paid for several sinks this year already that have broken, and they've been fully replaced, so. And some of this stuff, mainly possibly, if I look at this, the GMS curbing and parking lot, whether that comes from end-of-year funds this year, or whether we, or whether the, the town, the board looks to use funds next year, I think that's something that, that has to get...
You said GMS or LMS?
GMS.
GMS.
So that's, that's the GMS curbing as you step up onto the sidewalk. So from the cars to the sidewalk, it's crumbling to the point where...
That was something that was identified during joint loss as being, as being an issue.
Yep, so we looked to get a price, we looked to get that work done during paving season, but it just, we weren't able to fit it in. So that's something that, in my opinion...
That's a huge...
Will, needs to happen, whether it comes from end-of-year funds or, or looking at, at funds next year too, that's it. Some of the other stuff are truly just decisions which, which would come, because I don't want to just tell people like, if, if these don't get voted on, none of these will happen. Like, the GMS curbing thing, I think, will happen probably, I don't want to say no matter Like the GMS curbing thing, I think will happen probably, I don't want to say no matter what, but like that, that, that's a safety thing that, that really should be solved, so.
PD training you have listed, is that police department or professional development? Okay.
Yep, so, well, it is, both. It's actually both.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to share with fire and police, yeah.
Yeah, so new police chief has done a lot of work with townwide reunification type of thing, which is, which is a very important thing to kind of, to think about and to practice. And so, you know, my understanding, my, you know, so if you're bringing in all the people, we might have the brunt of the share of that money type of thing. I don't know if they would kick in some money as well, but it's making sure that when we practice an Alice drill, we can practice it to a much larger extent type of thing.
Makes sense.
And this, we'll start to, we'll vote on this.
Close.
Well, we have, I guess, is, is, are we thinking we're going to have a third meeting in June to vote on, on conferences?
We have done that of four. If we can't get it done, if we don't have the information for the.
The second meeting.
Second meeting, yeah.
So this is putting it on the radar for the board that this may warrant a third meeting in June.
Yeah, so and also what can typically happen too.
We're going to strive not to do that. Just want to be clear, I'm counting only two more after tonight, so.
So also, what can happen too is you can kind of go piece by piece too. So next, next board meeting, if there's something that kind of rises at the top that, that the board knows that they want to approve, we can go ahead and approve it that way and kind of get going on ordering those things as well. And if there's something which is like, oh, I don't, you know, kind of more down the line, can kind of wait till more of the numbers come out as far as kind of final fund balance. So if we look at that, and, and this again would be for everything that we know the price of or estimates of kind of coming out, then we're down to 33,000. Then we start adding back in to what would be used to reduce taxes. So the 497,000, which is associated with the land purchase of the elementary school, which is not going through, is going back to reduce taxes. So that, that's a number, that's a firm number. That number's not going to change, it's always going to go back. Then we add back in the 572,000 for special ed. Again, that 572,000 will change, that will not be the, the number that you see at, at the end here. Obviously it'll be somewhere around 500,000, but it will not be 572,000. So if you look at it now, you know, and again, this is not the final number too, but you're over a million being used to reduce taxes. What number did we start with when we kind of went into budgeting season was 697,000? So that's kind of on our DRA forms. How did we come up with that? The 497,000 for the land, which is a known, and then a, a rough estimate at that time of maybe 200,000 also going back. So anything over 697,000 that, that goes back would further reduce taxes. Anything under, which is, I don't think is going to happen, would make taxes go up. So I, you know, if our goal, we know we're looking to get over 697,000, we're already looking like we're going to be, you know, a decent amount over that as well.
All right.
So more to come on this.
I get their report.
Just, just, I, yeah, no, I want to say to Doug, like, you make this digestible and understandable for people who aren't necessarily into the, the money stuff. So I really appreciate the level of detail on how broken down this is. So this is super helpful as we're going through it. Yeah, I don't think I'm ready to vote on anything.
No, definitely not.
Um, but it's certainly, I would, I do appreciate continuing to get the quotes, you know, if we can get the GMS curbing one, if we can get some of those ones that are missing, I think that would be helpful so we can have those discussions and sort of weigh that out.
Great.
All right, well, we'll look forward to continuing this conversation here in a few weeks.
All right.
Anything else?
I do get to continue on my board report. This is a, this is a meeting of Doug. Here we go. So impact fees. So as, as we look at those, there are two kind of actions that need to kind, that, that I would suggest happen soon. So the first is, is a no brainer. So as we look at our impact fees, they're listed there. Elementary school currently has 16,581 dollars that we could use. 2,641 and 63 cents needs to be encumbered or expensed by September 12th of 2024. So that's something that could go toward one of those things that, some of those things that, that are on the end of year, not all of them, because again, it's, it's associated with impact fees. So at some point, we'll have to make a decision on, on how we're going to use that 2,641 dollars before September, or encumber it before September.
So either way, we need to get on the selectman's agenda to request the release of that money.
We do, yep.
Yep, okay.
So, next one, no need for anything. It's middle school has 17,713. None will be returned if not spent in 2024, but that's just kind of awareness as kind of forward with things at the middle school. High school has 52,295 dollars available of impact fees with again, zero that need to be returned if not spent in 2024. Of that amount, there's 18,525 dollars, which is still encumbered for projects that have already been completed. So want to thank Ms. Kleiner, Ms. White, as, as I kind of looked at this, they, they were able to kind of help do some of the digging too. So what happened was after COVID, you know, there was work at each of the schools or thought of work at each of the schools for, for HVAC and other work. So there was a request of the select board to open up money of impact fees. They, they agreed to it. There was a further request that said, okay, of this amount, we, we really want to define this amount for a lighting project, but it's going to be this range of dollars. And then we want to define this amount for water pressure problems, which was the booster pumps, which is going to be this range of dollars. So both of those projects were completed and we've been reimbursed for impact fees for both those, those projects. And again, the lighting project was a combination of impact fees as well as the seed grant from the state as well. So that left 18,000 and 525, which is now just sitting there encumbered, not going, not going to go to anything. So it would benefit the, the board to make a motion to unencumber that amount, because we, we have no information that it's, it's going to go anywhere. And working with, again, Ms. Kleiner, Ms. White, we know it's, it went to that, that range of dollars for the booster pump and the lighting project.
And when does that 18,525 need to be spent by?
None of that has to be spent in 2024.
But we don't know the date on that.
So I, I had to get back to, yeah.
So that, that's not money that the school district has on hand, that's money the town still has on hand for, for payment if we do encumber again.
If we, yep.
Okay.
If we have a qualifying expense that we encumber, yep. So, yep, so typically we would write, like you said, a letter to the select board saying, this is our intention. Then they, they would either approve or not approve it, and if they approve it, they, we then encumber the money. And then when we're done with a project, we write another letter back that also shows proof of, of the work as well, and then the money gets sent over to the school.
Gotcha. One conversation that might be worth having when the board works with the Board of Selectmen on the impact fees is, I recall, I think, watching a Board of Selectmen meeting where, where it was discussed that it is broken out by school. And my understanding is that a lot of other towns don't break it out by specific school, they just break it out to school projects. Because ultimately, right, like, if you were to combine all these three numbers, we might have impact fees that were available to do a, like a much larger maintenance on something that's more important. Whereas right now, we might say, okay, there's something at the elementary school that's going to cost us 20,000. Well, we can use 16 of impact fees, but then we have to, you know, encumber other money.
Right.
Versus being able to use all impact fees for something. I know that the, I know, it sounded like the Board of Selectmen's biggest concern was, you know, us trying to sort of backdoor projects that, you know, it seemed like. But I, I think that if you look at this from a logistics perspective, it might actually make sense to revisit that as we look forward to facilities and maintenance of facilities. That's one of the big things that the facilities committee is going to be working on, so.
Gotcha. Right, I will make a motion to unencumber 18,525 dollars.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Shoemaker for their discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand, carries 500.
Thank you.
Do we need directive here to send an email to the board on the 2,64163? Because we need to get ahead of that.
So, again, I, I think it can wait till, to next meeting, so.
As long as we continue to track that, because I want to track that as a part of our discussions.
First, we need to identify a project, something to spend it on before we request it, right?
Yeah, we should do it our next meeting.
You know, if it's hard to find something, one of the easier things could be radios.
Can that go to rekeying?
If we're rekeying, the portables, I guess, possibly, but, so. I mean, it could definitely go to more radios at GMS because we've expanded services of, and more, therefore more people need radios. So, and each radio is roughly a thousand dollars each, so.
Okay. Let's, yeah, be sure to continue to track that for our next meeting then.
All right, last one, cell phone reimbursement. So it has been, a board approved that positions who would require in their responsibilities to have a cell phone would get 600 dollars of reimbursement if they can prove that their cell phone, you know, plan costs 600 bucks throughout the year, so 600 or less. What we're asking is the consideration of additional people. It's, it's listed by position as far as who gets the cell phone reimbursement. So director of food services, three kitchens, the directors is often obviously only in one place, but has timely questions from, from people. They use her cell phone in order to get that, that answer quickly. So that is, that is probably almost a, a daily thing where they're looking to get information from her and she's able to supply it in a quicker manner because she's using her own personal cell phone. The other two on there is our accountant and our payroll person. So we used to have physical fobs that when we went to move money within our bank accounts, it would produce a random number. And the bank said, you know, we have a safer way of doing this, it involves using an app on your phone.
The RSA app, the RIDs.
Yeah, so, but in order to use the app on the phone, someone has to be willing to use their, their cell phone. No one balked when, when I said, hey, the bank said this is safer, you guys all need to give me your, your cell phone number. You know, everyone said, okay, you know, type of thing. Because there's four of us who, who can make these authorizations. It's accountant, payroll, myself, and, and Holly type of thing. So Holly and I already qualify for the 600, but the accountant and the payroll does not. The only, but it takes two authorizations each time whenever money's moved. It's not just one person, I, I can't do it by myself. It takes, it takes two people type of thing. So the accountant and the payroll are, are usually one, if not both of those, those two people as, as we make decisions or as decisions are, are made by the board. So they have no choice. If we want to be safer, like Citizens is asking us to do, they have no choice but to use their cell phone. They've been great about it, but thinking about as far as like, I, I think that should come with a reimbursement. Does it come with a 600 reimbursement? I don't know. But I think it should be acknowledged that the fact that, hey, we're asking you to use your cell phone, not in a personal way, but you need it to be used for.
Great idea. This is a great idea. At 600 aligns to the others that we reimbursed for.
Yep.
For policy, I'll make a motion to approve the 600 per year for each of these three positions.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand, carries 500.
All right, thank you. Well, that's it for me.
All right. Let's move on to public minutes from May 1st, 2024. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes, updates to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ames, additional discussion? Call the, call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 500. All right, next up is new business, and I'm really excited for a policy update tonight.
Yeah, we had a good, almost two hour meeting yesterday, hour and a half meeting for policy with Renee. She's fantastic, she's on top of it, and the superintendent, and Tina and I, so it was the four of us. We will have five.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks. Five policies for the board to review on the next agenda as well as three, two or three withdrawals of old policies that we can remove just to formalize their removal. So there'll be eight different first reads, well, I guess, five different first reads and then three removals. I don't think those require a second read, but, for the next meeting. And then we've set up our steps to be able to continue to work towards hopefully five policies, an agenda, is what we're aiming at, and hopefully we'll get, we'll stay on track with that.
All right, thank you for that. We'll look forward to seeing some of those updates come in.
Yep.
And next up is grants and general assurances. I have reviewed the general assurances. Thank you to Dr. Jettie for filling in the changes. That's one of the things that I would called out and saying, I just want to understand what those changes are because they're called out in the assurances. And in the sign, or in the copy that I have here on top of the blue folder, it does list out all of our applicable policies. I haven't cross-referenced that with our actual, I'm assuming those are all, there's no challenges with those policies, given everything else?
We filled that in and just reviewed, they're all, all those policies, I believe, have been, I think the oldest was like 2020, so they're relatively fresh. There are no 1987.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, I mean, just to make sure they're all approved policies, right?
They are, they are.
All right, thank you for that. So with the board's acceptance, I will sign the general assurances.
So you want a motion or are you?
Nope.
Okay.
That's fine.
Good.
All right, thank you for that. In program assurances, so this is something that the superintendent signs.
Yep, and those have been signed and they'll be submitted together once we get the signed general assurances back.
All right, anything else on grants this evening?
No, I think that covers this.
All right, moving into old business, first up under old business is the LMS solar project and an update on a meeting with, with the developer. I, as well as several others, Mr. Todd and Mr. Jettie, they, they, we all had the opportunity to meet with Kay. We requested an in-person meeting with Kay. That was on, was it Tuesday?
Yes, yesterday.
That was yesterday.
Yeah.
It's like forever ago. We had a walkthrough of the project, we had a great discussion in kind of a round circle format about just where things stand, express some of the frustrations the board has shared on project timelines. I believe, my understanding was the solar panels should have been delivered today. Whether they have or not, I don't know, but they should have been delivered today, 880 panels to start to be installed effective immediately, which will take us until July. From there, there's been a lot of recent commentary on the battery storage system and what that looks like. It is projected to be towards the end of this year. That is, that is a delay in certainly our contracted denim that we have in place. So as a next step, I have asked Kay to, to put together another contract for the board to review with the proper timelines as well as the proper changes to the technical specifications of the batteries. Because what is being, what is being presented now to, to, to be installed is different than, is a different type of battery system than what was in the original design scope, right? And I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. I raised concern about the fire department, making sure they're clear on what these batteries are. Lithium titanium.
So the original were the super, super capacitor batteries. These are lithium titanium oxide batteries.
It's not titanium though.
Titanium.
Yeah, it's something different.
LTOs or something is, yeah.
Is this still a solid state or is this?
It is not a solid state battery. It is, but again, Kay got into the safety of this battery. It's a carbon activated.
It's being marketed and certainly presented as a superior product to what was in the original.
So the safety aspect is still.
Correct.
Equal or better to the solid state storage that we were originally promised.
And it would still be housed in the container. It would have all the fire suppression that was talked about earlier, so yes. And, you know, with the fire department, in my conversation with the fire department, I won't speak for them, but they kept saying, hey, as long as it comes, and they cite some certain code, as long as it meets this, it's approvable. So Kay has said it will meet that.
So more to come. Be expecting to review another contract with changes in it for all the proper scope, Hopefully in the next few weeks, so maybe in time for our next board meeting. I've also given the changes in staff that are forthcoming, and I stress the importance to maintain continuity on the project. We've exchanged contact information, I have asked to be included in the kind of the key milestones of the project, so we have awareness of that as well. Questions on solar? All right, board goals is also under old business, this is really just a placeholder at this point. I know Vice Chair Ames and I have talked along with the superintendent, we really feel it's important at this point to, to wait six weeks or so until we have the new superintendent in place. We can sit down and start to understand goals and set those goals for the district, but we wanna make sure it's top of mind for the board, because we do wanna refresh those goals. Facilities report, Mr. Shoemaker, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll go really fast. Okay, a few things, we talked about possibly moving our meetings to the fire station, cause this isn't the ideal setup. John Burnell was apparently watching our meeting, chimed in and said, no, thanks. Please, no, it's not available anyway, so we're, we're not gonna be doing that.
Creates logistical challenges for LCTV.
That was, that was the biggest thing, yep, and I appreciate that, so. And they've addressed, addressed the audience with the boom mic there, so we have that figured out. I do believe that Kyle is planning to make a visit out to GMS to do some of the, like, greater, more in detail inspection with Bonnet Page and Stone. I have not received, I, I guess Ron got an email, I have not received an email about time and place for that yet, but that's something that we're gonna be working on.
Matt, can I, can I just get clarity, so Doug and I were talking, at one point, the board had directed us to send a release letter to Kyle and to Bonnet Page and Stone.
Right.
But now we're continuing, so we're just confused, what do you want from us?
So we do, we were, it was, it was to the entire team, right, cause they're all under an RFP that is no longer moving forward. I think that we are looking to consult with Kyle on this particular thing at the rate that he headquartered us.
Not pursuant to an RFP, but separately.
So we, we haven't done a letter, because then that conversation started, and it was like, wait a second.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Where should we go, so do you want us to do a letter, or do you want us to hold?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Letter that references the contract that was signed, and the decision is to.
Given the March vote, right, the decision is to no longer pursue those, those requests for service.
Right.
And it's everybody that we were engaged with on the proposal that went forward.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. We had a discussion about what, like, what facilities we have, what are the needs at the specific facilities, one of the things we're looking forward to is like, how do we start maintaining things? In, in aligning those with the SIP and, you know, maintenance and stuff like that. A couple of things that were identified to us, or one thing that was brought up to us when we were, when we had the conversation about maintenance of the buildings and, and lack of maintenance on certain things, was just, again, the staffing shortage, and it was brought to our attention that Dave Ross is mowing lawns. And so the majority of the Facilities Committee had some concerns about the fact that that's the point that we're at, and whether we should be contracting some of that stuff out, like we have done with some of the janitorial work. And so they, they did ask that we bring that back to the board to at least, you know, make that, make the board aware and decide whether or not we wanted to approach the LSSA on whether they would wanna consider outsourcing some of that.
Yeah, well, I'm completely open to it, I think it, it doesn't hurt to have that conversation with the LSSA and just see where their heads at. And then if that's favorable, we can start certainly to, to get some estimates.
Is that something that, how, how do we go about doing that?
We have to go to RFP or something?
No, I mean, we first have to have a conversation with LSSA, cause we, we can't go to RFP.
So our monthly management meeting is tomorrow, so we can engage in that dialogue. So it's good timing on that sense, but then we would have to put together an RFP to put it out to bid.
Sure. Yep.
And I think we had found a former RFP.
Yeah.
So there is a, a, a previous board, prior to my time, had, had this conversation, cause there was a RFP that was put out, I don't know whatever came of that.
And the planning board does this too, so I don't know if they're, if we can leverage kind of their RFP as well, I don't know, just an idea.
Planning or?
Rec.
Oh, sorry, the recommission.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So a key thing often with the LSSA is the, the timing of it. So like when we hired in the contractual help for custodians, we were very clear that we only signed a contract through the end of this year. So as we, as we engage with the LSSA, are we looking to go through?
Next school year?
You know, the growing season, October.
Through, yeah, through the mowing season.
Through the mowing season.
The major mowing.
So that's what, they're gonna wanna know, how long are you looking to do that? So it's hard to do an RFP just for like three weeks, it's like, well, we're gonna do it for three weeks, you gotta kind of do an RFP, it's, it's through the growing season.
I mean, look, if we found that all of a sudden we were flush with help here, we have a million things that we have to get done. So I don't, I'm not worried about us having people sitting around waiting to.
I'd say through October.
Yeah.
That's when.
I would say two.
I wouldn't, because we should, we should, I think they'll, they'll block at a full, at the end of next school year, I think they'll block at that, because we should be finding people to work for our district.
We can't make people work for us.
Well.
I would recommend through the growing season.
Yeah.
If, I think that's what they're, they're gonna, cause that, that would give a chance after growing season to hire somebody.
That's specific enough, is that just me not understanding what growing season means?
I think it's, I think it's October, November.
You wanna go to November?
I just feel more comfortable having a date certain, because if we interpret growing season to mean A, and they interpret growing season to mean B.
End of October.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna put a date on it, they're not gonna.
End of October.
End of October, right?
I, I will just say, I mean, putting an RFP out now is very late for landscaping companies, like they've got their work lined up for the summer, so we'll do our best, but it, it's gonna be a challenge, but we'll get going on it.
Do we put out an RFP for?
Snow, we have it ready to go.
No, I'm sorry, for the custodial company that has come in, that's doing the work at CHS and LMS, or is that just a find?
That was a kind of more of an emergency, we need to find, cause if not, we're gonna have to shut down.
I do.
That was more of an emergency situation, so we asked not to go out.
And I, I guess what I'm saying is I'm wondering if this is similar to an, an emergency situation, in that we are now, yet again, in another spring maximum growing season where the lawn has to be mowed weekly, I would assume.
I think one thing that was mentioned at Facilities is that the town does contract some of those services, in that there may be an ability to talk.
The rec is.
Oh, the rec, okay, that's what you guys were talking about, so it may be worth talking to them to see if we can.
That's what I was saying, it might be, first of all, see if LSSA is open to it, but secondly, then contacting whoever the town already contracts through to see if, rather than putting out an, an RFP or whatever it's called.
So the reason I wouldn't say it's not an emergency now is we only have, you have sports season, then you have non-sports season. So we, by the time anything happens, sports season would pretty much be over, cause the grounds is, is lining for sports, moving stuff around for sports, as well as mowing. So we do have one full-time grounds person who is unbelievable, always, always moving, always going, type of thing. So once sports season is over, he'll be able to do a lot of the mowing, what doesn't get done sometimes is the mulching and, and other stuff like that. So less of emergency, cause we're almost done with sports season at, at this point.
But we're gonna want someone in place for fall or August, with preseason and football.
Definitely, yeah.
All right, two more, two more quick things with facilities. We are very lucky to have some really experienced people on the Facilities Committee who are, just have some knowledge about, you know, maintenance things. And so one of the things that we've started talking about is understanding how we track maintenance as a district. And in particular, Dr. Jettie brought to our, our attention that the district does have, I think it's a program called School Dude that they do use to track these things, and luckily, one of the members of the Facilities Committee has experience working with these types of systems and offered to volunteer his time to meet with Dave and kind of learn about how we're using it and help us understand if there's ways that we could be using it better, if it's, you know, if it's the right system to help us track maintenance on every specific thing that we have in the district. Can you look so concerned about that?
I mean, when we started using School Dude, Dave had gone through the trainings, and then, you know, I'm, I think that's, that's generous of, of a community member to offer to go through it with Dave and make sure that we're using it efficiently, but, I, I mean.
I mean, if you look around at the maintenance of things, right, like it's.
But I think it's more of a staff issue, that Dave is the guy for the district.
Right, but we need to be, we, it, it doesn't hurt for us to have a better feel for, are we using those things? Are we tracking everything, like, you know, do we know, you know, like some of the, his point was, there are systems that you could put, literally put the serial numbers of the units that we have in there, and it'll tell us, like, these are the types of things that you should be doing. I don't know what, how we're using it, and I think it would be useful to, to gather that information.
I've only ever used School Dude for booking rooms, so I always just thought it was a.
It's surprising.
I didn't know what's.
I've never even done that.
When I was on GMS PTO, I had my own, like, email to book all of our meeting space for all of the different things, and I didn't, so I didn't realize it was a maintenance.
Apparently, apparently does all of that.
It's incredibly comprehensive, it does all that, and what Matt's referencing, I mean, you can literally put the serial numbers. It's a big database, it's just a way to store the assets.
We know that that's not being done?
So when it was originally set up, there was stuff that was put in, you know, Michelle honestly did a lot of management of that, and so I can't speak to where it currently stands. It was handed off to Dave when Michelle was exiting, but then we've had the custodial declines and so forth, so I.
But the Facilities Committee does want to put a particular emphasis on making sure that we had, that we, as a, that we have plans for maintaining stuff, so.
Yeah.
It's not, it's, the, the, having someone else from the Facilities Committee come in and look at it is not an attempt at us saying, Dave, you're not doing a good job, or, we don't know, we have no idea how it's being used, we just as a committee wanna understand what's, how it's being used, and can it be used.
Or efficiently.
Right. And then the last thing with respect to Facilities was, we, we laid out governance vision, mission. I didn't answer your email, but I can tell you that I did talk to Mr. Mitchell on his way in. He has the notes for that, to update that stuff, and he, after today, he said he would be able to get to that, so we'll get that stuff.
So, and just so you know, that was a written, a request from a member of the public, and I was gonna respond that it's an incomplete work product, cause I don't think it's been voted on yet. I think it's just a draft, right? Okay, so I'll, I'll answer that.
So, Dan was gonna, I think he was going to update the draft and then provide that to the rest of us.
So I'll just answer that it's an incomplete work product, and I would assume whatever Facilities does comes to the board for final approval anyway.
Right.
So we're.
And, and I, I anticipate that we will be making.
Next meeting, right?
Yeah. And I anticipate we'll be making that a public document anyways on our, our stuff, so.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's everything.
Okay, excellent. Moving right along to zoning meeting, just as a reminder to the board of the continuing item for the zoning matter with the, with the parcel of land, with easement, thank you. Campbell High School, that is scheduled to be discussed on May twentieth, which I have in my calendar to attend, we've already sent the legal letter that was prepared for that as well, so. School board comments, what do we have this evening? Lots going on in our schools right now, so.
There's definitely a lot going on.
Nope, I will close school board comments, we'll move into manifest items. Do we have three signatures on the manifest?
Do.
No, most had two. Just a question for Mr. Todd, and no action right now, in one of the bright yellow folders, I, I put a blue mark next to two items that seemed higher than normal.
Okay.
So we'll take a look at that afterwards.
There's only one, oh, two bright yellows, okay.
Okay, there's two small blue marks that are higher than normal. Moving into community input, this is where the school board will open community input prior into entering a non-public session. And this is the conclusion of our agenda, so it's happened right before eight PM. Public comments shall be made without expectation of response by any school members to matters raised by such commentary. And comments and statements may be made on matters of public concern directly related to the district's policies, programs, and operations. Public commentary should be limited to three minutes, and if you do come up, please identify your first and last name, as well as your address. And the board vests its chairperson or other presiding officers to terminate any remarks of any individual in community form. They do not adhere to the rules established in policy B E D H. Community input, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ray Fantasis, I am the mental health counselor at LMS, and I just wanted to, I wrote something down, so I wouldn't forget it. So again, I'm the mental health counselor at LMS, I hold licenses as a licensed clinical mental health counselor and a master licensed alcohol and drug counselor. Certification as a guidance counselor and certification as a prevention specialist. I've joined you tonight to advocate for myself and my peers as non-union employees. I enjoy my work at, at LMS immensely, and have seen the positive impact of my union peers receiving a new contract. My hope is that a rising tide will lift all ships. I believe that the purpose of the new contract was to retain high-quality staff and stay competitive with other districts. In order to keep my two mental health licenses, takes both time and money on my part in order to retain those. I do pair collaboration with peers in Manchester and Wyndham, and through that collaboration, both have indicated that those districts are, are, remain more competitive than where we're at now. I'd like to advocate for a pay scale that matches my twelve years of experience working in schools and my twenty-two years of working in the field. And that's the conclusion, thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening, appreciate all you do.
Appreciate it.
Any other community input this evening?
Corey Solzen, I'll put on my union cap, just to put on, so I'm the LEA president for our town. There was a couple kind of pieces of information that I can provide for you, so just, so for the CBA contract in the appendix, we looked at making an even distribution for all positions, there was a little bit left over. So the lowest stipend positions got a little bit extra compared to everything else. There was a small bump up for the athletic director as well, so it was pretty much evenly spread. It was a pretty quick discussion and agreement on both sides, so there's just a little more information that, on that piece. The special ed money, thirty positions, thirty pairs, so thinking about all the kids that didn't get that extra support throughout the year in all the buildings, I just wanna be very clear about that, cause we talked about money, thirty people, and thinking about what thirty people in our district would have done, and the, the work that thirty people can do, that, right, that's detrimental. The last piece that I wanted to share for information, I just spaced it, so I can send an email, but it was another piece of information that I could have quickly just given you inform, oh, School Dude, that's what it was. So as a teacher, just how do we use School Dude, nothing can get done in my classroom unless I put in a ticket for School Dude. So right now, I'd be surprised if anyone said it differently, especially with being down custodial work. So that should be all tracked and in there, because I know even if I have my shade broken, nothing can happen unless it's clearly put in a ticket. So we are utilizing that, it should be tracking all that information. But I know sometimes it takes a long time for any of these to get done, because it becomes, like, a shade is not always the greatest priority unless it's a safety shade, right? So I hope that helps a little bit, and just kind of a couple pieces of information I can share, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Solzen. All right, and with that, we will move into non-public session, I will entertain a motion, but before doing so.
So moved. So moved.
We are moving into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three, and specifically A, B, and C this evening. Now we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by the same, second by. Ms. Harrison, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, carries five zero zero. Thank you all, and we'll see you in a few weeks.
I see that.
And I am dreading.
It's been like that for years.
Yeah, but it'll happen to me on public television, and that'll be something that's on like.